Okay, so we're at 6:06 and I'd like to call the superintendent planning search meeting to order for Wednesday, March, oh, March, I apologize. May 17th. I would like, do we take attendance?
One, two, three. All board members are present with the exception of Trustee Hill, who will be joining us shortly.
Okay. If we can stand for the pledge, I guess we're gonna do that today, too. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Is there any public comment? Okay. Seeing no public comment, we're gonna move on to agenda item number three, superintendent search. We have Dr. John Severi with us today from Michigan Leadership Institute. Dr. Severi?
Thank you. It is just Mr. I appreciate being called doctor, but I don't, I haven't earned that, so.
I made you a doctor, I apologize.
That's okay. No, no, no apology needed. Okay, so you have, I gave each of you a green folder where you've got some materials that we're gonna be referring to this evening. Starting with on top, of course, the agenda for the evening, which you've seen previously. So, I've got at the beginning, opening remarks and introductions, but if I can, what I'd like to do is start maybe with introductions and it just would be helpful to me, I don't need a life story, I won't put you on the spot, but just a little bit about you in terms of how, maybe how long you've been on the board, how you got here, what your connection is to the district community, whatever it is you'd like to share. But you heard about me before, so I'm not gonna repeat myself. I'll just add, though, just personally, so I've been married for 39 years, two children, four grandchildren, two cats and a dog, live in Rochester, have lived there for about 15 years previously, had been always in Wayne County and the Down River area. So, I'm really happy to be here and looking forward to getting the process started.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm Carolyn Noel. I started as a trustee in January, got elected in November. I have a sweet husband who's watching my two and a four-year-old right now. He's been dedicated and I just wanna tell him I love you and I appreciate you. I've been married coming 10 years, so we're having the Big Ten year anniversary and we also have a black cat named Sheldon. My two daughters will start preschool at Fox Hills coming September. One is currently at Fox Hills.
Nice. Thank you.
Hi, Paul Collin. I've been on the board for, it's going on my eighth year, so I went through the previous superintendent search, I was on the superintendent search. I have two children, one is graduated and working now in Boston, and one who is a sophomore at, or just will be an incoming junior at MSU.
Nice. Thank you.
Siva Kumar. Been a board member for the last two and a half years, my first time on the board. Married for 26 years, have two students who went through the district, one who just graduated from college a year ago, and my second born is a senior at the University of Michigan. Yeah, I work as a CFO at a startup in the Detroit area.
Thank you.
I am Michelle, of course, and I have four children and amazing husband. My oldest graduated from college a year ago, oh, almost two years now, a year ago, and I have a senior in college at Oakland University, and then I have a senior who is at BH, and he is graduating, and he's a proud 2023 graduate, looking forward to the ceremony, prom is this Friday, so just in case you wanna come over and see my son, you're all welcome. No, I'm just kidding, but prom is this Friday.
I don't think they want.
And I certainly think they don't want you at his prom.
I don't think we were invited anyway. We were not invited. And then I have a wonderful 10-year-old. He is at East Hills and he will be back at Eastover next year as a fifth grader, so that's awesome. I've been on the board since 2020. I like to say that every presidential election would be when, when I would be voted in. And I think that's it, right? Great.
All right. I'm John Van Gimmer. I have three children in the district, one who will be going to the high school next year, one who will be starting at North Hills in sixth grade, and then one who will be moving from the old Eastover to the new Eastover in second grade. My wife also teaches in the district and we've been married for almost 18 years. I'm an attorney and I think that's about it.
I'm Targ Falafel. Carolyn got elected last year and so started in January. Been married to my wife Nancy for 13 years now, almost, be 13 by the end of this month. And she, today was, she's been PTO co-president at Conan Elementary where both of my kids go, so Sophia is in third grade and Noah's in first grade there, and I'm just proud of them, proud of, I mean, that was, one of the big reasons I ran was my kids, obviously, and definitely motivates you, so happy to be here.
Nice. Thank you. All right, so I do wanna make a point to thank you for selecting Michigan Leadership Institute and me as part of that to facilitate your search. I know this is an enormous responsibility and the most important decision a board ever makes, and so I know it takes a bit of a leap of faith, right, when you reach out and select a firm to assist you with the process, so what I would ask of you, I think probably more than anything, is to maybe even trust yourselves in terms of that, you know, you heard from various firms, you selected us, and part of the reason I would expect that that's true is that you know that we have a ton of experience with this. This is a process that, it sounds like only one of you has been through before, one board member? Paul, you're the only one? So, you don't have the experience or expertise for something like this, but I do. I've done this over 30 times over the course of the last seven-plus years. The organization itself, Michigan Leadership Institute, has done this, I think, not quite 500 times, too, and when I say that, not just gone through and facilitated the process, but highly successfully. There have been a few blips, but not many. For the most part, the searches have gone well, boards have been really happy with the process, and they've been really happy with the results, which, of course, is the bottom line. So, we're not here tonight to create a process, I'm here tonight to share our process and kinda lead you through that. There's some decisions to make within that along the way, but I think an analogy for me is it's much like when you, I don't know what firm you use anymore for board policy. What I was familiar with when I was a superintendent was we used Neola, and I know Neola would provide updates to us, and for the most part, the updates were the updates, right, and those were things that we were expected to adopt, but there were things within there where we had some choices to make, and I look at this as being much the same fundamentally. The process is the process, it works, we're hopefully gonna follow that, but there are some decisions to make within that and we'll be getting to those tonight. So, I, more than anything else, ask you to trust, trust me, trust the process, and more than anything, what we wanna hear at the end, and we've heard this numerous times, is that we make the process easy for boards, but the decision hard, and the decision being hard is about the quality of the candidates, which is exactly where we wanna be with you folks, and that's our expectation. So, having said that, I wanna go through the agenda real briefly. We're gonna spend most of our time on timeline and search activities, and I wanna make sure you know that, because when we spend an inordinate amount of time on that, you may be thinking, oh, my gosh, we've got so many agenda items, life will be here all night. That agenda item itself takes an inordinate amount of time, because we want to come to agreement on specific dates and times of all the activities involved, and in the course of doing so, we're gonna be reviewing the process step by step by step by step. So, that will be the part of this that takes more time than anything. We'll spend a little bit of time on basic candidate qualifications, compensation, contract parameters, I'll speak to how to go about making recommendations, just touch briefly on expectations, roles, and responsibilities for all of us, and depending on the time, we may spend a little bit of time brainstorming on these two topics that you see here. We'll make that decision when we get to that, see where we are and see how long we've been here and what your appetite for that is, and then we'll leave it the opportunity for you to ask any questions you might have. The goal, honestly, is for you to walk out the door this evening and feel like you are crystal clear on what this process is going to entail, what it's gonna look like, what your responsibilities are, when everything is going to take place, so that you have, hopefully, a comfort level, knowing that it's all mapped out, you know what to expect, and we're ready to roll. Okay? Questions about that at all?
Nope.
Okay. So, you have in your packet a draft timeline. I splashed the draft watermark all over this, because I wanna be clear that it's just a draft. I can tell you that in terms of the dates that are included here, depending on the specific dates we pick, I know that these would work for me, but I can't assume that they'll work for you, so there may be some adjustments we have to make, and I realize that. I wanna speak to you, too, because I think this came up when I did the presentation, a little bit of maybe angst about the timing of this and the, from start to finish, the length of time of, for this. This is intended to be efficient, but not rushed at all, right? So, this process is, mirrors a process we use with districts, whether we're starting at a time when they're beginning the process in February, they've got all kinds of time, there's no rush whatsoever, times like this where you're maybe a little bit more in a pinch, but just know that we could make adjustments based on what you may prefer, based on our discussion tonight, but what I'm presenting to you is just what you would see if, if it was February and we were having this conversation, right? So, this fundamentally is the process that we utilize, large districts, small districts, you name it, and it has worked effectively for us over the course of years. So, obviously, first step is to meet tonight, and then the goal would be over the course of the next couple of weeks, we would collect stakeholder feedback primarily, not exclusively, primarily to develop the candidate profile, that's the most important part of this, which is a profile of what the ideal candidate for Bloomfield Hills Schools would look like. And the way we do that is we get input from various stakeholder groups, I think I heard you say, but I wanna confirm before, there's two ways we go about collecting input or can, and it could be either or or both. Most districts, I'll just tell you, opt for both, but it's predominantly an online survey where we ask some fundamental questions, which really consist of, what are the skills, abilities, and characteristics that you believe the next superintendent of Bloomfield Hills Schools needs to possess in order to be highly successful? Collect that data. We also ask about kind of the high level, like top five strengths of the district. That's primarily just to help put some data and some information into the position announcement for recruitment purposes, but it's helpful. The candidate profile really is more critical, because once that's developed, that's something that I'm gonna keep in front of you throughout the process, too, and continue to remind you that as we're reviewing the applicants and beginning interviews, et cetera, we wanna stay grounded in what we've identified as, that what we're looking for in a candidate based on the profile. And what is, what we're intended to do, so, so the online survey's gonna get, ask those questions, and we'll get very likely quite a bit of feedback there. Quite often, we'll do face-to-face meetings, too, just because there are some folks who prefer that opportunity, not because we need to, honestly. I'll tell you from experience, the vast majority of your stakeholders are highly likely to participate via the online survey. It's just far more convenient, they could do it at their leisure, they could do it at their own time, they can do it whenever they want. We usually give about a week's window for that, and, and you get plenty of feedback that in and of itself would be enough, really, to suit our purpose, but we do provide that face-to-face opportunity for those who may benefit from it. I will tell you, though, that because most people, and normally when we communicate this, we let people know that they, here are the two options that you have, and here's the survey link, right? And then here are the dates and times where you could come and meet face-to-face. Again, from experience, the, the face-to-face meetings are typically fairly poorly attended, which isn't a reason necessarily not to do them, it still serves a purpose, I think, but just know that, that sometimes I think boards envision, well, my gosh, we, we better have these huge rooms and we better have multiple meetings, and, you know, we're gonna get overrun with people because there's a lot of interest in this. There may be a lot of interest in this, but again, if, if given the online option, most of your stakeholders will take that option. So, we don't need to provide an overabundance of the face-to-face opportunities, but we wanna provide some opportunity for those people who may well have interest, if that's your preference. Again, if we were gonna go one or the other, my, my suggestion would be utilize the online survey, because you'll get far more feedback through that.
How would a face-to-face, sorry.
Go ahead.
How would a face-to-face be facilitated? I mean, survey to me, that's pretty clear. You're gonna have a pretty fine list and maybe, maybe a free-form text field as well, but if you're gonna have, you know, a room of people, like, how does, what would you go through to entertain kind of an attendance like that? Would it be sort of an open town hall where people can have dialogue and give their feedback and kind of a discussion, or is it a predefined kind of thing about, I don't know, maybe prepared questions that they just listen to? I mean, how does that work?
For consistency, because, you know, ultimately, what's gonna happen, I'll back up, I will answer that question.
Okay.
But with the responses we get through the online survey and face-to-face, we're asking the same questions face-to-face, and what we're looking for is consistency in the questions that we ask, so that with the feedback, we're looking for the most common responses. The idea being that when you're talking to stakeholders across the board, students, staff members, parents, community members, board members, administrators, everybody, that what you wanna see is, with all these different folks from different, with different perspectives, what are those things that rise to the top consistently with all these groups, right? So, we wanna ask the same questions, no matter how we're asking. So, very honestly, with the face-to-face groups, I'm asking exactly the questions that I, that I expressed to you that would be included in the online survey. I think the difference is that there's a bit more of a brainstorming quality when you do it face-to-face, because if you're in a room and you hear what other people have to suggest, that may trigger some thoughts in your mind, but if you're sitting at a computer, it might not necessarily pop into your head. So, I think there's some benefit to it in that way, too.
Just as a follow-up to his question, so, I know you're gonna say it's poorly attended, but let's just say you're here and there's 50 people, and you say, what are the characteristics? And is all different groups represented in this room? Are you just gonna go person by person and get their feedback? Like, how are you gonna, how are you gonna facilitate that discussion? Let's say there were 50 people in this room and you had those five questions, how would you facilitate that?
Exactly that way. I, I would be as patient as I need to be to give everybody who wants to have input the opportunity to. Depending on the timing of the meetings, you know, there are times that we have a cap on it, but it's been pretty rare, honestly, that I've been in a situation where we get to the time where we have to stop a meeting and I've gotta cut people off and they haven't had a time to express what they wanted to, especially if it's a later-in-the-day meeting and you've got community members, parents, and there's not really a hard stop. Honestly, I would take as much time as was needed.
And I guess the question also would be, how do you, as a facilitator, and maybe, maybe you've done it in the past, avoid it going in a different direction, right? Avoid it going through, as opposed to you just trying to get the feedback on the characteristics, going through, well, these are the problems that we have in our district, you know, how are we gonna, I mean, I'm just saying, have you run into that and how do you facilitate that?
I've absolutely run into that, probably fairly often, I would say, because, let's face it, I mean, sometimes what happens is that people who are motivated to come to the meeting versus reply online, sometimes that's why they're there.
Correct.
It's an opportunity to vent a little bit. You know, I have done this a ton, and not just in this role as a consultant, but as a superintendent, as a, as an administrator in other roles, too. I gently remind people that that's not what we're here for, as simple as that, right? That I understand that they may have concerns, there are appropriate ways that they may want to express those, but we're here for a specific purpose, and I try to redirect them and get them back on track, sometimes with more success than others, but I don't, I don't give up on it, right? I'll just continue to try to bring them back, because I also wanna be respectful to the vast majority of people who may be in the room, who are here for the reason that we have gathered them, right?
Well, and they could be in a room looking for superintendent quality to solve the problem that they perceive exists, right?
Oh, I guarantee you that will happen. In fact, I think quite often, the candidate profile is somewhat driven by what the district perceives, district stakeholders perceive, may have been the shortcomings of the previous superintendent, previous leadership, I mean, I think that's just human nature, that you're looking to fill gaps that you perceive might exist currently or previously, so that'll happen.
And I'm sorry, just a final question, because just a member from, and this is different than the last search, so it would be, if, let's just say, this would be the place, so it would be you being at places, I think in the past, whether or not this is right or wrong, in addition to those meetings that were here, the firm went to various places to meet specific focus groups, like, you know, as an example, they would go to, and I'm just thinking, because we were there the other night, the Muslim Unity Center and meet parents there, meet, meet specific special education parent in a specific, would work through to also identify specific groups in addition to these type meetings and go out as well. Is that something that we would not do?
We typically don't. We don't go that far and get into that, break groups down quite that far, but I will say this, now, for example, particularly with high school students, I would normally go to the high school, because most often, kids are so active after hours that we catch them during the school day, and it makes no sense to put them on a bus and have them go someplace else, so I go to the high school and meet with them. If it were middle school kids, I would go to the middle school. Quite often, what will happen, too, even with staff members, normally, on a given day, we would have a couple of different meetings for staff members, as I may have mentioned this before, one that would coincide with secondary dismissal, and I would do it onsite somewhere, whether it was right at the high school, for example, or middle school, whatever made the most sense for, for secondary staff members to gather, giving them enough travel time if they need it, but it'll, it'll be after student dismissal and before they head for home, ideally, and then duplicate that for elementary staff members afterward.
So, you do a hybrid, so you do it on specific key, right, staff, right?
Right.
As opposed to having them all come here, you'd go there, and students you'd go there, right?
Yes.
As a minimum, okay.
Got it. Got it.
I'll answer, I'll ask my question.
Okay. Sorry.
It all works, as long as the question gets presented, that's all that matters, right?
So, so one of the things that I will do immediately after this, immediately, meaning perhaps literally immediately, right, where we'll touch base and look at, at when this might possibly occur, when we could have face-to-face meetings, when it might fit on the calendar, and with a two-week window, that's something, obviously, we would do very promptly, and we'd need to get a communication out as well, or if not tonight, I'd follow up tomorrow. So, we would jump on that right away. Let me just run this by you, so that I'm being very transparent, and tell you again, this is what we would typically do, something like this. So, again, the communication, we would get ready, it would go out and express to your stakeholders, and you would wanna share this far and wide in any way that you use to communicate with your stakeholders. You know the routine and what your methods are, but I would use all of them.
I don't think we do, right? I mean, I mean, within the school grounds, yes, but outside, that's always been a problem, like, from a community perspective.
Okay.
Right? I mean, obviously, yes, we know how to reach families within the district, but families outside the district, that's something, going back to the bond and going, we always, like, what is the most efficient way to reach people that don't have students in the district?
So, I guess I would just say, whatever you have found from past experience, whatever the answer became when you, you struggled with, okay, we're gonna have a bond proposal, how do we communicate this? You must have come up with an answer to that question. I would say use whatever's at your disposal, and you just wanna be as inclusive as you can, so you want that word out there. The last thing you wanna hear, of course, is when it's done, have somebody come back and say, well, I would have liked to participate, why didn't I have the opportunity to? So, the idea is that everybody has the opportunity, hopefully.
In your experience, and I'm not saying, I don't, from my perspective, and I've been around a while, I don't think we have, so, in your experience, non-district families, what is the best method in communication out to them?
Oh, gosh, I don't know that I have a great answer for that. I don't know that there's a great method to it necessarily, very honestly, unless you have a built-in system where you have a way to identify those families and you have a delivery system identified prior to, coming up with one now is gonna be pretty dicey. That's where you can use, you would hope that people avail themselves of the website, you use social media and hope the word is kind of, and you, to a certain extent, can encourage that, too. If you know of others who might not naturally get this message, please share it, it's intended for anybody and everybody in the community. I don't know if you have any kind of local publication, it would have to happen quickly that might be able to get something out.
I mean, there is, I just don't think we have a, we do have local publications, we do have social media outlets, I just don't think we have a process, really, to reach families outside the district that we have tightened up, just because, I mean, outside of the bond, some other things that are going on, we don't really communicate as much as we would like or should be.
Understandable.
We can identify what method we would like to use, so for instance, if an ad is something that we are suggesting, and then that's something we could work with our communications team, I keep giving Karen a team, I know, to work with and getting that published, but...
But, you know, that, it could be local houses of worship, it could be, I don't know if you have a Chamber of Commerce that has a listserv for local businesses, where you say, here's this information, can you please pu, you know, it could be a link to a flyer, can you please put this out in, I would just suggest you be creative in some of those ways. Who are the folks that you'd like to get the message to, and where are they most likely to congregate and perhaps see a message where they wouldn't through your website or some other district communication?
No, I get it. I mean, I was just gonna say that I'm a liaison to the Birmingham Bloomfield Chamber of Commerce, I could reach out to that organization, they could disseminate the information to all the companies in the area, and I'm assuming that would affect families as well, people who work and work there, and also Bloomfield Township Public Library.
And we're all in a liaison, that's a good point.
Yeah, we just reach out to our connections.
Yeah, I mean, it's excellent point. I think as liaisons, I think we just need to, you know, what is the most efficient way, to your point, you go to them and saying, to get the word out, and we just get the word out. I just don't think, right now, and we're brainstorming now, we have a defined process.
Understood. Yeah, I, you just wanna make a reasonable effort, so that if anybody does question it, it's pretty apparent, you really did earnestly make an effort to communicate this far and wide and be as inclusive as you could.
Did we, at the time of the bond, send out postcards in the mail?
We did. I mean, obviously, we asked communication, like, how did they reach, right? And that's one method, and I think liaison, I just don't think we had a, it's, it's always difficult, because people, when we say social media, then we say a lot of people are not on social media, you know, we go through the, you know, who's, you always got the people that's like, well, how are you reaching? I mean, so...
I do think, one thing I would just say is, is that, let's suppose, and I'm gonna just reflect back on previous experiences, and if you were to have, you know, think about all of the people who potentially could respond, you know, I think with districts where I've seen really healthy responses, you might get 300 to 400 responses from an online survey, and then in terms of face-to-face meetings, 50, 60, 70, whatever the case might be, 80, right? It's not a huge number, maybe even less than that quite often. So, you're still getting only a small percentage of your stakeholders, the idea is that you simply wanna make sure that you're providing everybody with the opportunity, whether or not they avail themselves of the opportunity is another story, and I do find that you get, you can trust, I believe, that, it's not scientific, but it's our perception that you tend to get a wide enough of an array of feedback that it ends up being that the profile you develop is a pretty good reflection of what folks in the community really are value and what they're looking for.
So, you'll develop for us?
Work with our communications team to develop.
Well, I think we hired a firm to develop, I mean, when you say work with our communications team, I think we, we hired a firm to develop sort of what it's gonna say and plus the link that we could all disseminate out.
We'll provide the survey link, and all you have to do is send it out, the results come to us, so if there's any concern about that, right, from people who wanna vent, even if that's not the purpose, but there sometimes can be a little bit of concern, and while I'm afraid to send this to the district, I don't want them to know what I'm saying, it wouldn't come to you, it would come directly to us, we would get... saying, it wouldn't come to you, it would come directly to us, we would get all the results. I would, though, and, you know, people aren't identified, it would be anonymous, we could break it down so that the responses, if you're interested, you could see how many responses came from, it could be identifiers, are you a parent, are you a community member, are you a staff member, are you a student, whatever, and then we could disaggregate the results, and so you could see all of the responses if you're interested, right? You may be interested in seeing that. My job then would be to go through all of it, and again, pull out the most common responses and put it in the form of a profile. I do typically work with the district communications department or whomever to craft messages to go out, because it's your folks who are going to get the messages out. I feel like there's a certain level of trust we have that they know the community best, so we depend on them in that way, too.
And then, too, you know, responding to an unfamiliar, you know, contact versus a familiar contact is also important, but I think that, to your point, Paul, as far as having a plan outlined, and I think we, Karen is definitely going to be instrumental in putting together that plan for us and working with John and making sure our networks are as far and wide as possible.
Yeah, I mean, my only point is not leveraging, you know, people in communications, we want to make sure, you know, even going through this the last time, feedback I got, that this search, and this is nothing against the district, is our search, not the district search.
No, 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 no.
No, I'm just saying, but...
I don't think that's the point that I was making.
No, and I'm not saying it was.
As a board, I have zero access to community contacts, and so Karen also is over our website, Karen is over communication, although we're not saying that Karen is going to be the lead, this is a partnership with the district and the Board of Education and John. There is, there's no one component, we may be leading the charge, but we still have to present ourselves as if we're working together to hire a superintendent, which includes the district staff.
Yep, we utilize district resources to support the board's effort to find its next superintendent, with, of course, the support and assistance and guidance of the search firm. So with the, typically what, you know, I normally would spend one to two days in a district, just depending, right, what I would need to do to accomplish this, and normally in terms of the groups that we would identify and set up meetings for, and we don't, normally the only group that has any limitations to it is generally students, only because if you set up an after-school meeting for students, students are so active that you're just not going to get many of them present. I've tried it before, and it was a bit of a miserable flop, so we typically will target student groups that you feel are representative of the student body in general, as much as they can be, knowing that, though, we would still want to communicate even to your students that there's an online option, and somehow promote that as best we can, because we want all students, if they care to, to feel like they have the opportunity to participate as well.
One of the things, and I know, and maybe it has, it hasn't been shared yet, is we have a student board intern program, advisory council members, it's made up of seven, and one of their main roles is to help gather student feedback on critical things that the board is looking to implement in terms of policies and things like this.
That's fabulous.
So my recommendation would be you work directly with them on the best way to get that student feedback, and then quickly, you know, after this meeting, I knew that they were thinking about doing a survey to the, you know, to the student population that was put on hold, so they can meet with you and decide on the best way to gather that feedback, have these meetings, survey, et cetera.
Perfect.
So my recommendation is we put you in contact with them immediately.
And what's the name of that group is, what do you call it?
Student Board Intern slash Advisory Council. And I'm chair of that committee, and I can give you the names of those people and their contact details, or Rebecca can.
That would be perfect, so I would lean on that, those folks, my, the intent would be, because we want the feedback, we get to be consistent.
We can't give them student, we can't give them email addresses?
No.
Bloomfield email.
It's FERPA.
Through FERPA, you shouldn't be, but I'm not...
Rebecca, we have to, that's how we have to go through the district.
Rebecca, that's fine.
No issue. I mean, there's an easy enough way that you folks can connect me with those kids, right? I'm not concerned about the delivery method, I know that that can happen, but it sounds like the ideal group of kids to go to, to say, here's the communication we're putting out. I would want, though, and I think it's important, that same link that we're providing to all of the stakeholders, because we want the responses to be consistently answering the same questions, so again, we can look for those common threads when you ask everybody the same thing. So the discussion with the students would be, here's the link we're putting out, what's the best way to communicate this to your fellow students and to encourage participation?
And I'd like them, I mean, because that's, initially, they had drafted some questions, and we're going to go through that and kind of mine it, so I think a part of this, if we have time, because it's the 17th of May, so, you know, we're slowly ticking down the clock. So even if in early on, if they could be a part of, like, looking at the data and start trying to understand it, and kind of like, they probably won't go through the full effort of building a profile just because of time constraints, but at least getting some time put into looking at that and saying, hey, this is what our student body is saying, and understanding a little bit, I think that'd be good, just to have them involved in the process, because...
Because the seniors of our, I'm just saying, that's one student population, the seniors' last day is next week.
Right.
So I'm just saying, so I think the goal, and we talked about this as a board at our last meeting, would, and Rebecca can, put you in contact soon or later and decide the best way to get at least a senior feedback, and I think for the juniors and middle, and everyone else, we have more time because they go into June, but the seniors sort of end there, and they're not going to be sort of after next week, probably, you know, and then they graduate, and I don't even know when they turn off their Bloomfield email address or when they're going to be checked out, so...
Well, I mean, bear in mind, my intent is to get on this immediately, it is, and it needs to be, because if we stick with this timeline, we're talking about collecting the data, disaggregating the data, putting together a profile and a position announcement, getting it to you to review and for you to provide feedback, and then posting it within about a two-week period. Now, again, that might sound, it is a little bit intense, but it's also the norm, that's what we do. We normally have a tight process, and we just, as soon as we get the go-ahead from the board, we have this type of a discussion, we get moving, we get it scheduled, we make it happen, we get the communication out, collect the results, and off we go.
That's fine, okay.
So, again, I just, I would envision then meeting with a student group during the course of the day, we usually split off administrators as a separate group, partly because they have a different perspective, partly because we ask them not to be at the other staff meetings, we want the staff members to be able to speak freely, frankly, we ask the same of the board, best that you not be present at those meetings so that people can say what they want to say. We'll have those meetings coinciding with dismissal for secondary and elementary staff, and any staff members who don't fit one of those definitions, the invitation typically is that, go to either of those meetings.
If any one of us has an idea of a specific stakeholder group, that would be powerful, do we send that to you?
Actually, I would prefer that we, let's talk about it right now.
We all received also an email, Rebecca put together a very fine list that was sent to you earlier today with details of every student club and organization, as well as our student leadership, National Honor Society, and Student Senate, as well as our middle school student senators that are eighth grade only. So that email was sent to you all about 1:00, in addition to the doodle poll that we also need your availability completed for, most of you have done that as well. So those things were sent late this afternoon at about 1:00, so if you're looking through your email from me, if you can take a look at those, that would be amazing. John, did I, I forwarded to you?
Okay, thank you. So I will follow up with Rebecca right away, and we'll get to work on getting these meetings scheduled, getting the communication prepared, getting that word out, getting the link out, and getting the ball rolling on that, so that we can have the position announcement ready to post then by June 2nd.
This is all just student clubs, right? I'm talking about, like, like, today I was at the PTOC meeting, like, I'm just saying...
Well, you said students, I didn't know you said...
No, no, I was talking about if there are any non, like, I'm comfortable with the board interns only and advisory council working with the MLI.
Well, I guess we were talking about the, because it was also brought up last meeting, that we wanted to make sure eighth-grade students had the opportunity to also partake in this, in the conversations, and so as John would be actually going into the high school facilitating conversations, what stakeholders do we want to be sitting in front of John to engage in that dialogue, right? And so what stakeholders do we want him to actually, like, the parent groups, what stakeholders do we want for John to sit and have that conversation and facilitate those questions with, in addition to not just helping with the survey dissemination? Like, the parents would come, and you would, he would ask the questions and get their feedback, the conversation was had the last meeting, for those conversations, we also had with groups, not just at the high school.
In terms of students?
In terms of students.
If it was your preference, and it felt like it was important, I could include in my itinerary a stop at the middle school as well. And again, the idea would be, normally, we kind of lean on the high school principal, with the marching order being, we want a representative group of kids as best we can. Sometimes they'll default to, like, a student council because they feel like those are kids who were elected by their peers, and they could be representative.
But I thought that's what the board intern advisory council is going to work with you on, what is a representative student group?
Oh, I see what you're saying, you're...
I'm past the students, I'm like, you know, Rebecca put you in touch with the seven, and you work on a plan...
Okay.
Using this guide, and you decide what's the best way to hit them, I'm talking about...
But that's one person's opinion, we have to make sure everyone's on board with that direction, what you suggested.
Well, we as a board, that's why we engage them, right? I mean, I'm saying to get student feedback, I'm just saying, then we're taking away what their role is, if we're not going to...
I'm not necessarily disagreeing with you, but what I'm saying is, we have to decide as a board if that's, we only want for our student interns to work with John in this process. Just want to make sure we're all together on the same page, so next time we come back together, we've made a decision, and the decision has been for the student feedback, this is what we're going to do, so we can't come back next time and say we didn't all agree to this.
Okay, all right. Well, I think that's what we, personally, that's, I'm one.
You are okay, but we want to make sure everyone is okay with that as our next steps, is what I'm just trying to make sure, because I don't know if every...
Are there any other options other than using the student interns? Because I'm a little confused by this conversation.
Because everybody needs to be, that's why we can't move on until everyone's...
What I had gone to, sometimes we'll go to the principals of the buildings and say, you know, help us identify representative group. What Paul is saying is that he would like to engage that student group, representative group, because that's their role, and then that would be the conversation I'd have with them.
And my feedback, right, as one for the rest of the board, is like, if we're going to say, go to administration to kind of pick the students, that is a slap in the face to the whole program and those seven students, to say, now we're going to go to administration and ask them, then why are we having this? If I was a student, I'm like, why are we having that program?
That isn't what I'm saying.
Work with other students to get their feedback about concerns and problems and bring it to us, that was my understanding.
And work with the board on, if there's initiatives that the board is doing for a policy and things like this, to help gathers the best way across the district, student feedback. And I know me, Tarek, and I can, you know, right now, we're in the process of interviewing the next group, that's what we're asking, right?
I think they did that in the past as well.
Yeah. They did it in the past for the last superintendent search.
Right.
And they were successful at it.
I do feel there needs to be an adult as well in the discussion, maybe that's an assistant principal, right, who works with the board interns to assess if their proposal they're coming up with for outreach, student outreach, covers as much of the population, student population as possible, right?
I think, I think we're thinking too deep, like, he's, John's got a link he's going to give to the kids, and the kids are going to help figure out how to best disseminate that, which basically is through email, I mean, I think we're going way too deep, you know what I mean? I mean, that's all it is.
How are the kids going to email?
They're not, that's the real, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I thought you just said basically...
Well, I mean, they're, like, somebody, whoever it is, as an administrator, will take this and send it out.
But I think we're missing the conversation, like, I think we also are, we're taking a piece away from the students that we're offering the community, and that's the sit-down conversation that John gets to have with our stakeholders who are parents, and our stakeholders who are our community members, and our teachers. We have not mentioned John having a sit-down conversation when he goes into the high school with the collective group of people who now get to respond to the questions in the same format that we're giving our parents and our community members and our teachers. It's, that's the piece that I'm saying that we're missing in this conversation, not removing the facilitation from the interns, but what happens to the students being able to sit down in a room with John and give their feedback.
So I'm, what I'm suggesting to you, again, this would be consistent with what we typically do, maybe a step beyond, the student board intern advisory council is, I think, a little bit unique to you folks, which is great, and I think to go to them and have that dialogue about, here's a survey link, what's the best way to get this out and encourage participation, right? At the same time, though, I agree that partly what we want to accomplish is identifying what representative group exists where it would be appropriate to, we'll have a sit, a face-to-face, just like we're talking about with these adult groups, right? And it could be certainly at the high school, possibly at the middle school as well.
But my point is, like, how we're having discussion now about what's the best way to get community members, and we're discussing it, we're coming up with ideas, I'm not saying that it's not going to be this big group, I want to empower these seven to work with you and collaborate and come up with the best idea to reach as many students as possible, that's their role, it's not saying, all right, we'll talk with you, but the board suggested, you know, or whatever, we're going to have this big assembly and work with administration, I want, I want them to be empowered. I mean, this year, for them, and we had a, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, I mean, they felt, you know, they felt demoralized that they weren't involved in a lot of process. Now we have a critical process, and I want to empower them to work with you as the adult to come up collaboratively, what's the best way to get as much student voice across the district.
I think Siva does have a point, though, and that there needs, there should be, at least when, to understand where our parameters may be, right? So there may be suggestions that may be great, logistically, right, but is that a viable option, right? So maybe if we don't want to have a person from the high school attend this conversation, then perhaps maybe we have one of us attend that conversation, because I just, I think, I agree that we want our interns to have this experience, just my, my opinion, is I somewhat agree with what Siva is saying, and making sure that whatever things that we're putting in place are things that we can definitely move on, so they don't feel like we've deflated their suggestions.
I'm fine if it's one of our board members, I'm just, I don't want it to be, and this is no slap on it, the feedback I've gotten over the course of the years from student interns, not just this year, in the past, is, are we part of the board, or are we, do we report into administrat, you know, it's that fine line, and if we need in addition to, to MLI working with them, just to make sure whatever they're proposing is feasible, then fine, it could be a board member sitting in the meeting, and I, and I don't, I trust those students that we, that all went through a selective process, they're not going to come up with something that is non-feasible.
It isn't a lack of trust, it's just making sure that the things that we are suggesting are within reason, in scope of the timeline.
So, go ahead, Siva.
Let me, let me bring up another point, right? The whole diversity assembly saga blew up because, to some degree, there was not enough participation, let's say, from administration, or we, we just want to make sure there's some representation from administration to be part of the process, we're not telling them to take over the process, that's not their role, but I think it's important to have an adult from administration, either an assistant principal, or somebody who's familiar with the high school and the, all the different groups within the student body, to be, to, to just, you know, work with the student board, or the board student council.
I don't disagree that after collaborating with MLI, they come up with, this is our plan and gather the feedback, seven focus groups, a survey, this and that, we want to survey, go to the email addresses, and then go to administration, this is what we want to execute on, does that make sense? You know, can we execute on it? And they're like, no, because of these reasons, or, okay, we can do that.
Yeah, we're not going to, I mean, it's not like we're going to put the kids in auto mode, I mean, of course, like, John's going to be, like, he's going to get the feedback, we can take it back to administration and us and say, does this look good? Yes, I mean, John's not going to, and no one's going to do anything unless we all look at it, I think we're, we understand that pretty clear, but I, I would prefer to let the kids operate as a group, review what they've done, and say, yeah, this looks great, or no, it not, than try to have influence of administrators guiding, like, the process, I don't really want that, I want it to be the kids working with this firm, and we go back and review and say... I want it to be the kids working with this firm and we go back and review and say, is it appropriate? Which I'm sure it's going to be. I mean, we, I can't imagine we're gonna come up with something, I mean, you're going to be helping these kids, it sounds like-
Yes.
-you've got some predefined things that they're working on and-
I, I, I will say this, I, I, I'm an educator, right? I've got a ton of experience working with students, right? So, and I would, my goal would be to keep it really simple with the students. What I would envision in terms of a dialogue with this group would be, we're going to have this survey link, we'd like to make students aware that it's available, encourage their participation, what's the best way to communicate that? How can you help with that? And then secondly, I want to go into the high school and meet with a representative group of students and get some, what might be the best group to meet with? Pretty simple.
And here's an example that the board came up with of all the different groups, what would be the best way to, and I think that'll hit the mark.
And so as we, and just keep it in mind that none of us are in, in the school. So we still have to work with the district and administration to make sure we've got the proper space that it's at a certain time of day.
Absolutely.
So those things still need to be coordinated with the high school. So although we may say we not, we may not want them present, we still need to make sure that we're communicating what we're doing as we're entering into these spaces during the lunch hours, whatever the case may be.
Well, that totally makes sense, where you, or John, you would say, who at the high school, if I, if I want to do days on the 23rd, like, what makes, what's available? What makes, of course administrative, like, in terms of operationally, of course you're gonna go through the high school. I just don't, I, I just would prefer, if they're gonna collaborate with you, to have, like, an, you know, an AP in that room, or then they're not gonna, it's not gonna be genuine. And I want it to be genuine.
If what they're doing is identifying-
Genuine in which response?
And, and what's the best way to gather student feedback? What, feedback I've gotten over the years is, again, they, they want to be empowered, not have, and again, as, as Tarek indicated, they'll work with the search, whatever they're gonna recommend, it's gonna come through all of us and we're gonna say, that makes sense, you know, right? And then operationally, can the high school support that?
And to be clear, you said it's going, the questions that the kids are gonna help you get submitted are the same questions we're gonna ask the community, right? For consistency? Okay.
Exactly, the same question. So there would be no issue with those. And again, so let's, I'm gonna suppose this leadership group were to say, as an example, we think your best bet is to meet with the student council members at the high school, right? They've done their job. And in addition to the discussion about how to get word out on the link, right? I mean, at that point, then, of course, I'm going back to the district and saying, here's what the student said, how can we make this work? Any issues with this, right? Any concerns? Chances are, I mean, I think I'll have a pretty good sense, right? If, and I don't think it would happen, that they're gonna suggest a group that is just kind of off the wall and, and, you know, not, not kind of a recognized representative group of kids, so.
I mean, I'm not saying that they're gonna do that, but we want to also make sure we have representation. So, I mean, and just making sure that there is voices from multiple communities at the table when we, when it comes time to being invited, you know, in, in those spaces. That's all I'm saying.
And I fully agree with that. That's how I'd be guiding the students, this student group as well.
Yeah. And I will forward you the list in case there's, like, additional dialogue that says, okay, well, I read the list and there were these groups too, what about these groups?
Okay.
In case you want to help with that, too.
Alright, I appreciate that. Alright, so we'll be following up and, right away, and getting all of that in place and, you know, whatever it is that we establish, whatever schedule, et cetera, obviously all of that's gonna be communicated to you, too. This is where typically in this process, we'll get to part of this a little bit later, but I'll lean quite a bit on Rebecca. She'll be my kind of liaison where she'll help to get the communications out to you folks and others, et cetera. Kind of the link between me and other district folks that I may need to work with. So, if all goes according to plan, you will have received the candidate profile, the draft of it, and the full position announcement with additional details to get the attention of potential applicants. Before that goes public, I'm sending that to you. You have an opportunity to weigh in and suggest any changes that you might like to see made, any revisions. Partly what I ask board members, too, is make sure I didn't screw anything up, make sure there's nothing in here that might be the slightest bit inaccurate, right? But beyond that, for example, if you see the profile, and even though it's gonna be based on a lot of feedback from a lot of people and it'll be most common responses, if you feel like there's a glaring omission there and something that just didn't come out in the survey but you think is really important, it's okay, right, for you folks to say, well, could we add this to the profile?
Can I take a step back?
Yeah, please.
Pass the students. So, we as a board, and I may disagree, so we're, we're just saying that survey and then anyone else, you have four or five days regardless, if it's like the PTOC or specific groups, they have to come here. We're not, we're not gonna target you to going to specific groups or have specific times for just a certain segment of our community to come meet with you. Are we as a board comfortable with that? Because, 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 okay, I mean, I would prefer we identify different stakeholders and have specific meetings, but if that's not the will of the board, then fine.
I think then you get into, you run the risk of, why wasn't, why didn't you come to my space, right? So, we, we have a ton of stakeholders in our community and if we only focus on specific ones, then we are not making, you know, at least to me, a full community inclusive conversation.
I think the key would be, if you identify the constituent groups that you think it's really critical to get their feedback, right? How do we get the communication to them? How do we make them avail, how do we make the community, the link for the survey available and encourage their participation to make sure that anybody and everybody then who has interest has that opportunity?
I do have one question, and I don't know if this is a good suggestion or, but I'm gonna ask anyway. Because we do, people may not be able to physically be present, is that something we could do, a virtual option? Is that, is that, has that ever been done?
I would discourage it.
And like, limited to like, smaller?
You sound like a hybrid. Because have a, you know, let's say it was here and we all know, we lived through COVID, how bad those hybrid meetings were.
They can only do a chat versus, you know, so they can only respond to it through chat? What would limit it? I don't know, I'm just asking.
Well, someone is, because it's hard, right? You'd have to have a colleague.
Yeah, I would-
Someone would have to monitor that, right? It's hard to go back before-
I just figured I would just-
Throwing it out there.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm just saying that feedback, when Pete, remember when PTOs and even we decided to do it, it's, it's difficult to go like hybrid.
I think it is, and I would question the added value, given that they have the opportunity to respond to the same questions that are gonna be asked face-to-face in a survey link.
Well, I just wanted to make sure we at least-
No, that's okay. I never, I don't ask any question you have, I, I-
So, regarding the stakeholder groups, I think people belong to multiple stakeholder groups.
They do.
And so, I, I don't see a problem with combining, you know, having everyone come in, they can indicate which, you know, groups that they care about the most or whatever, but I don't think that's that important as to what the qualities of the superintendent are necessarily. I think it's just so that we reach out to every, every group.
I just want to throw it out there, right? That's gonna be a question, right, for us. And I think Michelle raised a good point, like, why this group over another group? I mean, and I can't come up with an answer, why someone's more important than someone else. And I think the answer is, you come to the, you know, there'll be designated meetings. I, I mean, I understand the point.
I think, one, to your point, though, Paul, we think about, if we're gonna have multiple nights, is the same location always the best location, right? So perhaps maybe we look at having one on the west side, one on the south side, one on the north side, one on the east side, then that way it becomes, well, I could drop my family off and still make it to a six o'clock, right? Timeframe.
I'm gonna be real upfront with you.
I'm just, I'm just putting it out there as an option.
I appreciate that. You know, in a limited period of time, if we're talking about multiple days, multiple nights, multiple locations, it, it won't fit within this timeline. We, you would absolutely need to extend this time period. The question I would ask is, what are we gaining by that? When, and again, I'm speaking from experience. When you give people the online option, the vast majority of people are gonna simply say, nice and convenient, I'm gonna just simply reply here. And even if you were to provide multiple opportunities, what you'd find is you'd have, very likely anyway, maybe this would be the exception, but from experience, multiple opportunities where you'd have very, very few people present. So I just, I question what you'd really gain by that, honestly. I think the face-to-face, limited face-to-face opportunities simply present the opportunity for those limited number of constituents who may feel like they need to talk to a person and they want to be present. But the fallback is, for anybody who even, for example, if we set up a meeting and, well, I have a conflict and I can't be there, but I still want to give feedback, they can.
Go survey.
Right.
So, are you envisioning, to Michelle's point, maybe not location, let's say it's two or three? One daytime, one nighttime? What, what, what are you envisioning?
That's a good question. You tell me. You know, quite often boards will say, we prefer something in the evening where, that, where people, working people can show after hours, but we could do one of each, so, because there are people, too, where the daytime may be more convenient and-
Well, the daytime is not just convenient, I mean, for the, I'm talking about, yeah, so like, community members that, the community member, yeah, the nighttime, of course, but the daytime for like-
Parents with kids in school, for example.
Parents with kids in school are greater community members that may not be, you know, retired, right? You know, like to, you know, come to a, a morning or early afternoon meeting, so.
Sure.
And, and we're thinking as a board here, right, as the middle ground, so in Doyle, this room.
This would be great.
A night, a nighttime meeting. So how many meetings are you envisioning? Two or three? How many?
Four, for parents and community members. Honestly, I, I think if you had one in the evening and one during the daytime at some point, in addition to the online survey, I think you will have given people ample opportunity if they're interested.
And then, is it there a day, like, you and your experience, is it a Wednesday night and a Thursday? No, I don't know, a Friday morning? I don't know.
That's gonna partly depend on my calendar and what's going on in the district. That's where I'll hook up with Rebecca to start with, and anybody else I need to, and start looking at the calendar and, and coordinating back and forth and just what's gonna work within this timeframe that we have.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yep.
If I could just have a point, make a point on location, this facility is absolutely at the south side of the district, right? If you look at-
South, the south, from?
If, if you think of our district, this is exactly at the southern border, right?
So this ain't the middle, is what you're saying?
So, pick something in the middle, Bloomingdale's Middle School or BHHS would be, either of those would be more centrally located in the district geographically.
Makes no difference to me. So whatever location you think is appropriate.
The high school auditorium? I mean, but I think to Michelle's point, right? We, this, not that this is available 24/7, but at night, but, right, then we're up against high school night events from now until the 31st, which, I don't know what's in the auditorium, maybe not, but-
Well, if, if- So I would suggest this, we can, we can check on locations that are more central.
Okay, that's fine.
If there's conflicts and within this timeframe, we can't make it work, we can default back here. How's that?
Understood.
Okay.
That's a good idea, though. I second that idea of having it more a central location, so everyone feels included, they can all gather.
Sure.
And if BHHS doesn't work, we can look at BHMS, right?
Yeah.
Okay, Paul, I'm gonna be, speaking with Rebecca, so she's hearing all of this, too, so.
If that's the central location of the district, so be it.
Yes, you will.
Well, not the central, not so far south. Well, sounds good. Good progress.
Okay. So, I don't want to rush you, tell me if you're ready, so I want to-
We, we, we've made, just so, we've made decisions, correct? Just so we can make sure we're okay with the stakeholders for the students and the community members, all hearts and-
I, I feel like I've got my marching orders.
Alright.
Are you good with that?
Got your marching orders.
Alright. Okay, and then, again, all goes according to plan.
Could I ask a question? I was listening to the meeting on the way here. Where did we land with the, the student group that selected, that's gonna be running point? I was listening to the discussion and I never heard the conclusion. Okay, so are we surpassing student body, like, student government?
So, no. So the board interns would, to, the recommendation from what I understood, would help in determining how we would disseminate and work to get the students to participate in the survey.
Okay.
And then the other conversations, they will help to identify with other groups to come and have the public conversation with, which could include the student government and other student groups within the, within the school.
Okay. I mean, I, I was just listening in on the conversation and I, Paul, I appreciate the heavy importance you put on the student interns. They are important and I do want them to feel empowered, but we can't, we cannot place the importance on them as higher than student groups within the district that were elected by the students. The board interns were selected by us. And I think that maybe what we're suggesting is that this is an extension of the board, but then I also heard conversation about some of this trying to be completely separate for the board to create spaces. So I appreciate the zealous advocacy for the student interns, but I don't think that that should, their importance should be higher than, you know, student government who was elected by the student body. That we landed on the interns?
We landed on the public conversation being more inclusive, but the support in gathering how to disseminate the survey, being a part of the student-
I just, I don't want to take away from student government.
Yeah.
And imply that the student interns are more important than them.
It won't.
Yeah, to me, this was really, how can, how can the student interns do something, have a task and work with the group to help get the survey out? Like, what's the best, because they've done it in the past, what's the best way of reaching as many groups as possible? But not, they're not drafting the surveys, they're not doing like focus groups or anything like that, it's more of just, how can we technically get this out?
Got it. Okay. I apologize for bringing it back, but I was listening for a half hour on my way here and I just, I didn't hear any piece about the student government. So, sorry for coming back to that, we can move forward.
That's okay. That's no problem. Alright, so this next part of the process can be awkward for boards because there's this flurry of activity at the beginning, now and within the next couple of weeks, and then it gets very quiet for you. And you're gonna be dying to know what the heck's going on, but I really can't tell you much. A, 99.9% of candidates check a box on the application requesting that their application remains confidential. So I'm not telling you who's applying until later, and I'll get to that, when we have our meeting where we come together and meet in closed session and I share all of the applications with you. So it's just know that you're gonna go through, and this identifies a five-week period, which is common for us, no matter when we do a search. We feel from experience that it seems to be about the sweet spot, it's out there long enough, but not so long that, you know, we're really not gaining anything. I'm monitoring applications as they come in. I'm contacting candidates as I have questions, things about the applications that maybe I don't understand, or, or questions that I anticipate you may have when you see the applications, just trying to get to know the candidates a little better. I confess that I don't always call all of the applicants. If there are applicants who frankly are woefully unqualified and there's no way they stand a ghost of a chance to be your next superintendent, I may not invest time in a phone call. But the vast majority typically, I'm picking up the phone and having a conversation. Because of the confidentiality issue, too, I cannot do reference checks yet, formal Because of the confidentiality issue too, I cannot do reference checks yet, formal reference checks, I can't start calling them. So, what I do is I do simple internet searches and you'd be shocked to, maybe it wouldn't be, but some of the things that can unearth. This is where our professional network really comes to the fore. I can virtually guarantee you now that I'm going to know some of your applicants and I will have vetted some of them thoroughly in past searches already, right, full reference checks. Others I will know professionally, even if I don't know them intimately, or I'll know colleagues who know them well or others within MLI who know them well. We network pretty extensively, so there are ways that we can learn some things about candidates beyond what they submit on paper. So, what I'm trying to do is arm myself with as much knowledge as I can during this time, so that when I do meet with you in closed session, I'm able to share as much as I can beyond what you see on paper. But again, just know it's limited and I cannot do formal reference checks until after you select the people that you want to interview.
And then before you answer that, I just wanted to make sure we acknowledge trustee Hill, who's joined us. So, John wanted to, gave us all a chance to kind of introduce ourselves to him. Just wanted to make sure you had a chance to also meet trustee Hill.
Thank you. I mean, we met a few weeks ago, right?
We did.
Yes.
But I, so, I ask people to share just a little bit about themselves, just maybe how long they've been on the board, a little bit about family, whatever. So, briefly, anything that you'd like to share? We all shout it out except for me.
How are our significant other?
Probably just little, like, three anecdotal things.
Got it, okay, so, we've lived in the district for 10 years. I have two daughters, one attends the district, one attends another district. And my eight-year-old, third grader is in, is within the district. We've been going through the program since she was, like Carolyn, she had, she was two years old when she started in Blooming Preschool, so I've been heavily involved in the district that way. Put me on the spot, Michelle.
No, that's okay, that's helpful.
Newly elected in January.
Yeah, I appreciate it, yeah.
Wanted to make sure we got a chance to show you out there.
Shout out to your significant other.
Shout out to your significant other.
Shout out to Pippa, she's four and a half, yellow Labrador retriever. She doesn't like board meetings when I'm gone.
That's all we want.
Sounds good.
And yes, shout out to my husband too, this is very awkward.
We're happy you got to participate in our...
Call me anytime, John, we can chat.
Shout out to, shout out to Deborah, if she's watching, I didn't do it before. I don't want her upset, you know.
Back on task, Paul.
Sorry.
All right, so you got a question?
I did have a question, right, so, and I, so, I'm looking at the timeline, what happens between June 1st and July 2nd?
During that, June 2nd to July 7th?
June 2nd to July, to, oh, I'm sorry, I thought that said July, I thought that said July 2nd.
It's okay.
So, it's, I'm sorry, it flows. I thought it was July.
That's a five-week period of time, and that is, applications are able to be submitted.
He misread the day.
I misread, I thought it said July 2nd.
I got you, okay. All right, so, go ahead, question.
My question about that portion is, what do you think about the quality of candidates at this time versus if we extended the timeline?
I think you're at, you, the advantage that you have, and I think I mentioned this during my presentation, is that there's very little, it's really oddly quiet on the superintendent's search front in southeast Michigan. The only searches I know of ongoing in southeast Michigan right now is Clintondale, which is a small district that wouldn't, the competition would be different anyway, and they're wrapping up. Wyandotte Downriver, and again, I think there, there could be some interest on candidates in applying to both, but it's still a different type of district and I don't necessarily see that as being huge competition for you. And then there's you. I mean, literally, when, when I say southeast Michigan, I'm talking about, if you took a, a map of the lower peninsula and divided it into quarters, it's, I, in the, close to eight years I've been doing this, I've never seen it so quiet. So, the advantage that you have, the timing may not be perfect in that when you look at the ending time of this, you'd be asking somebody to leave their district at a little bit of an awkward time to come here. But I would say if somebody wants to be here badly enough, and this frankly, you know, for a lot of people, I think, I would expect this is going to be one of those opportunities that they covet. I don't think that's going to be too off-putting. I'll give you the example of myself. When I became superintendent in Waterford, I started in October. It was far from ideal, I'll tell you right now, but I made the determination that that was one of those districts that I had a high level of interest in. It was open then, when was it going to be open again, right, and for me, that, that was my opportunity. So, I took it, so I think, I think the fact that it's a premier destination and for people who are either aspiring to become superintendents or looking to maybe take a step up who are currently soups in a smaller district, let's say, this will catch their attention and you're, you really don't have much competition from other districts at all. So, from, from that standpoint especially, it's a bit of an advantageous time to do it.
And, and I didn't, and I don't understand this, this point that another search firm, you know, brought up, that I guess the time period of the fall seemed to be more of, would get a larger pool than now?
I thought it was like after...
I thought you said like in the winter or something like that.
In the winter, yeah, in the winter, and I don't, I guess that's maybe my question, I don't know if that was, you know, what John was asking, is, is this the Memorial Day summer a weaker pool than the winter, I guess, of next year? Is, is, is that, I understand there's no competition, but in your experience, is...
Here's what I would say, the, the perfect time to be looking is when you're, you're timing this so that you're, you're conducting a search, you've selected the new superintendent, there's plenty of transition time before the new superintendent starts on July 1st, right? If, if you're asking for like, what's the perfect timing, I would say that's probably it. Beyond that, nothing's perfect. Anytime other than that, that you have a search ongoing where the superintendent's going to start at any time during the course of the school year, whether it's September, October, January, March, you know, it, it, less ideal than, than starting on July 1st. But I still go back to, I, I don't think, and, and this is my honest opinion, I, I would tell you if I really thought it would be problematic. So, first, honestly, is it possible that you could have somebody who would otherwise apply, look at the timing and say, I'm not leaving my district to come here the first week of school. It's possible, right? I think far more likely, if this is a position that they covet, they may not be in love with the timing of it, but they'll apply. That's what I would expect.
And I remember this from the old search, this was an option, never came true, but, or someone who's applying as a destination says, I want, you know, I, I want the job, but I owe it to my older, my district where I am to give them six months of transition, so even though they're signed, let's just say in August, but prefers to start mid-year, right, to, to not leave their old district. Is that something as a board that would, would be willing to entertain as well?
I, I was going to say, I think it's unlikely that anybody would ask that question, I think there's a tacit understanding, in part because you would advertise that you would be looking for the new superintendent to start in the first week of September, whatever, wherever this ultimately leads us, right? So, that would be out there, and if candidates have some angst about that and they would want to know, is there any flexibility? Maybe they want to give a little bit more time than this, maybe they want to make it a month, right? I think that might be more likely. They would typically reach out to me and ask me, on their behalf, maybe to kind of flesh that up with you, and I would do that, but I don't think it would be any more than that. Honestly, here's the other thing, my experience with districts is, once you're the superintendent in a district or the assistant super, whatever it might be, and you've now accepted the position of Bloomfield Hills Superintendent, you know, you've got kind of one foot out the door and half your brain out the door too. And I think districts recognize that and they, they really would almost rather, in some cases, just facilitate the transition and then they're free to go ahead and move on, right? Partly, I think too, the, the idea of that transition, even of that, that person sticking around until their successor is identified and the long transition, from experience, I think it's overblown. After, as, as the outgoing superintendent who was meeting with the new superintendent or the new superintendent coming in, meeting with the outgoing superintendent, for me, a day was enough, honestly. All I needed was a day. Tell me what's most important, tell me what needs to be on my radar, and give me your phone number so that when something comes up and I think, oh, you know, what's the history on this? Or have you seen this before and what's been your experience, anything I should be looking out for, whatever? If I could just pick up the phone and call this individual, I had everything that I needed, so...
I also think that if it comes to that week of July 10th and we do not feel we have a viable candidate, that we delay. I, I would hope that we would not just settle for applicants because they've applied and meet the minimum criteria, and so...
No, I'm, I'm not saying that.
No, I'm just saying if that were the case.
Which, which brings up a good point, if, to Michelle's point, and I've thought about this and a lot of community members who I've spoken to are concerned about this, are we almost in essence, and of course, we want to find the ideal candidate, but if we don't, are we almost like doing a dual search for, right, because we have a July 31st deadline to find an interim, if we don't find, if we don't find the right candidate, and, and Michelle's right, and I believe this, you know, we're not rushing this, so are we working with you to, like a dual, to, you know, simultaneously, if we don't find the right candidate, fill the full-time role to find a interim by August 1st?
Right candidate or not, we need an interim for a month.
Correct. Well, on this time, yeah, correct, yeah.
Here's, here's what I would, it's a bit of a tangent, but I'll, I'll go there if you're okay with it. Here's what I would encourage, if we could stick to, to this timeline, and I don't know yet, we may look at some of these states, we may realize you've got conflicts and we need to extend and we're having a whole different conversation, so... But if it's a very short period of time that you need an interim, I would suggest that your best bet may well be lean on somebody within the organization rather than bringing somebody from the outside in for a month who doesn't know you and has to...
I respectfully disagree.
Do you?
Yeah, and I, I think this timeline is extremely aggressive and I think we need to plan seriously for an interim and then hopefully be pleasantly surprised that a great candidate was shining through and that we go with them. But I, I have a lot of hesitation about this timeline and I think we need to, I think an interim needs to be top of mind outside of the, outside of an internal resource currently.
Well, how about this, two things, I, you weren't here for the comment I made earlier, where this is a timeline I would have presented to you whenever we were doing the search, and in all the years we've been doing this, this is a very common way this is laid out. We don't look at this as being aggressive, it's not designed to rush through.
So, I agree that the actual, the, the staging of it is, is probably appropriate.
Yeah.
I just think that what we're up against with the timing of our superintendent's departure and then the start of the school year and the start of a, a completely abnormal school year with a bunch of shuffling going on in our district and new schools and, and things of that nature, I think, given the context of what's happening in our district, this is aggressive.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
So, when, at the appropriate time, so I don't know what you're envisioning in terms of finding an interim. Typically, that's not anything like this, it's not, it's not an actual search.
I almost think that's the more important conversation than superintendent because of what we have at stake going on so much in our district right now, that I think we need to put a high importance on that.
Well, how about this, let me just suggest this for now, because this is a draft timeline that we're just getting into and let's see where this lands, and we'll have a better idea when we've gone through the whole thing as to what type of a gap that you're looking at and...
You mean when we've gone through it tonight?
Yes.
Or as we, okay, got it.
Tonight, yep.
Yeah, because we...
Yeah, the goal is to get all the way through this tonight and...
We need to move.
Yep.
So, John, how long does a search for an interim superintendent typically take?
In my experience with that, it consists honestly, very typically, of a district reaching out to somebody like me or others and saying, do you know anybody who's qualified? And you don't need to do a search, you don't need to do interviews necessarily, you know, you don't need to necessarily do any of that. And frankly, you don't have interim superintendents kind of a lineup out there waiting to be called upon to step into roles, right? There, there, there's not a ton of people, I think, who might fit the bill, and especially, like you said, you're dealing with some issues. So, who'd be prepared to walk into here and has the requisite experience to be able to manage it. So, in part, you'd be trusting somebody like me, although it wouldn't have to be me, to reach out and see who might be available, who might fit the bill, share that information with you and give you the, the opportunity then to, you'd want to have some kind of dialogue with them, but not so much an interview as much as just an opportunity to get to know them and determine whether or not you were comfortable having them step in as your interim. So, it, it, I've never had the experience of it being a full-blown search. It's just identifying somebody who's got the experience, the wherewithal, the ability to step in for a brief period of time. I've done it before, I've been in interim before, I was the interim superintendent in Birmingham for about an eight-month period of time. So, I will tell you, what, what you just need to do is, is have the experience and the skill set to be able to come in and know the law, know the regulations, know the routines of, of running a school district, have the skills to kind of swoop in and do some short-term problem solving without having kind of that long-term responsibility.
But since those conversations, go ahead.
I think the issue isn't the, the issues, I think the issue is that we're transitioning into two middle schools and...
And we don't have a high school principal.
Right, and so...
Gotcha, I hear you.
Yes.
So, it's not the, so much the social issues as it is the logistical issues.
Practical issues, right.
Majorly practical issues, the construction that has to get done in time by first day of school.
And even looking at resources, it's not even, it's not even saying, is anybody suited for it or not? It's like, there are so many things happening that people already have, like the people that we have doing things are doing a lot of things. So, it's like you, you need someone to lead and be able to manage the stuff that we have going on already, and we don't know. I mean, I agree, I said it last time, that yes, I think these are all possible, but we're talking about summer months, we're talking about all kinds of things happening, we're talking about what's happening with the construction and all of that, and if any of us have delays or if, you know, if there's any kind of delays, like this gets blown out of the water and then we're sunk, and then now, now we're scratching our heads, what do we do? I, I don't disagree that we should have a plan for interim of what, and that, and that also helps us too, that we don't feel like we're rushed. We can take our time and really go through the due diligence, we can do our best effort, we don't feel like we have to get it done and like rush to get a super, or an interim superintendent, and we can get somebody that will help us now and then take our time.
So, with the, with the interim, because you mentioned that we would talk about people and that would be their names, is that a, a closed session? Because I mean, I would imagine that if we were having an open dialogue about possible folks and, and that would be...
Paul, what was the procedure last time with the interim? Is it a posting that we make? Was it, how did that happen?
No, I think the board decided, right, so, to the, to the point, you know, we were debating, you know, until we found a new candidate, you know, who would be the best, was there any internal candidate that we as a board would decide that can step up and do it? And luckily, at the time, we found an internal candidate that would step up and do it and we had conversations and that internal candidate accepted that.
But did you have the conversations about possible candidates in an open session? I would just, that's, that's my question.
Can I give you an example?
Yeah.
So, Oxford Schools, right, they were, had a sudden need for an interim superintendent. So, I had done their search, they reached out to me, they, they came for help. I reached out to my professional colleagues and, and just, you know, tried to identify, and again, that's a district with some unique needs right now, obviously, right, it couldn't just be anybody. So, I reached out to Vicky Markovich, who is their current interim superintendent, assessed her possible interest, shared her information with the board, made a connection so that they could have some dialogue, initially kind of through some back channels, but then obviously they went public with it too. But they made kind of an initial decision as to understanding her experience, her qualifications, et cetera, whether or not they might want to pursue that before that became a matter of, of kind of public discussion, right? So, and, and if what you envision is having kind of a, a long list of potential interims, you know, it's, it's not likely, it's not impossible, that I might be able to give you more than one name of people who could be interested, but on the other hand, normally people who have an interest in becoming an interim superintendent, they're fine with you kind of reviewing their experience, their, their history, et cetera, and kind of making a decision based on their qualifications and even maybe a basic conversation, but they're pretty loath to go through a formal interview process, right?
Yes, but how, how do, how do you even enter Vicky's name into my, my space? So, I'm trying to understand, what would be the process for me to even have a conversation about Vicky being a potential candidate without having, and then you may say, oh, I want Sarah to be a candidate, and now we're talking about Vicky and Sarah in public, but we have a private conversation and come back out and say, X number, candidate number 14, but what do you think about candidate number eight? Similar to, I want to understand, like, how are we going to have this conversation about potential people?
How we can actually put this in motion.
Have this conversation.
They empowered a board member to take the lead on the process and have the initial dialogue. What I have seen boards do too, not necessarily exactly in this situation, but similar enough, you can empower even a, a subcommittee, it could be up to three of you, right, who, who would do that on behalf of the board and to say, okay, we have vetted this person, share the information with your fellow board members to see again if there's at least enough interest and you have enough confidence to believe that this is not going to crash and burn if you go public with it. So, that would be another...
I think it would be a heavy lift for one person, but, and...
I'll raise my hand, and if it has to be a committee, that's fine, but I, I believe this is an pressing import, issue of importance, and we need to move, and we need to start picking up the phone, talking to people, hearing word of mouth. Sorry, Sebo, go ahead.
Just following up on that point though, we've got, I, it's my opinion that we've got to see how the search is progressing before we start talking to those folks and giving them false indications, especially, especially, that's right, but...
And, and Pat's gone July 31st.
But, but my point is...
I mean, this schedule has zero room for error.
But, my point is, we ought to see how the search is going on but, but through, through sometime in early July before we start making a school start.
But I, I think to Megan's point, right, and, and I, I agree, and that's why I brought up the point originally. Now, think about what you just said, early, like mid-July, that's two weeks, right? So, we're not going to know where the search is going, we're, we're only going to be reviewing the candidate pool the week of July 10th, so we don't even know where it's going, and it's not going to be until, if we needed to say, you know, go back to the pool, that's going to be like the second, third week in July. Not saying we're going to do that, and then that gives us very limited scope for a committee to get together. So, I agree with Megan, and that's why I brought it up, that we almost have to have a simultaneous going on right now, because Plan B can't be July 26th, we got five days to find an interim.
We cannot do that to our staff right now, with, with Mr. Watson leaving July 31st, the transitions going, the start of the school year, internal resources currently are tapped more extensively than ever with, given the school transitions. more extensively than ever with, given the school transitions. I personally, I...
Has there ever been, like, an overlap in the time which, and I don't, and I'm just asking this question. It could be totally not a good question to ask. When the current superintendent is transitioning out, and the interim superintendent is moving in, is there ever a overlap? Is that like a nod, a thing? I don't know.
That goes back to what I had indicated before. Honestly, all you need is a day or two at most for that.
But would it be improper or out of the extreme ordinary to spend half of July with, you know, the second half of July with Superintendent Watson, just so that, given the abnormal complexities that we currently have going on in our district with construction, school transitions, et cetera, this is not just a status quo situation in our district that someone just passes off the baton in a day. I think they need more time.
You can make that determination. I would just, again, I'm telling you from experience. I'm giving you my opinion. I want to be really clear. I mean, that decision is going to be yours, right? It just is. So, but I'm happy to tell you what I think, based on experience. I don't think you...
But there's nothing we're missing in state law or something that would prohibit this?
Oh, no, no, no. No, not at all. That would be totally your call to make.
Well, I guess, I guess, to Megan and John's point, if the person doesn't have experience with building and construction and reorganization, then there would be a huge learning gap between them coming into a position if they'd never had to have a heavy construction project that we're undertaking right now. We also, we have a huge bond, and managing that process to make sure that they're, I mean, we have a great team here, but still making sure there's, there are no gaps in that process, too. So, I think that those are just some things we want to make sure that that person has at least some experience with those.
So, I would look, if you were asking me to assist with that process, I would be looking to you to provide that type of information. What are some of the skills and experiences, given what the person's going to be walking into and dealing with during the short period of time that they're here, that you think that they need to have so that they're ready to step in and give you what you need?
Right. So, the biggest thing, even, not as much, but similar to the construction is, like, change management, right? We're going through one of the biggest, probably in this district's history, change management of going from three middle schools to two. Fifth grade is going back to elementary schools, and there's going to be a lot of things that, to everyone's point, this new, you know, the new actual and the interim is going to be having, and someone's going to look for answers and going to need someone to make decisions.
I mean, I do think this is going to be a difficult find. We're talking about someone that may only have a job for a month.
I disagree. I've already heard word of mouth, a lot of people are willing to raise their hand and do it. I think there's a lot of people who understand the circumstances we're in, and if it's three weeks or five months, I think that they're willing to offer their expertise because...
So, toward, on that note, if I can say a couple of things. One, I would, one of the things I would certainly entertain and encourage even, is if you happen to know of folks through word of mouth or personally or anything, who you believe it might be worth me reaching out to on your behalf to explore their possible interest and availability, that would be fantastic. I mean, I would appreciate that. I'd find that to be very helpful. The other thing is, I hear loud and clear that you feel like, A, it's going to be important that you bring somebody in from the outside, that you're not very interested in having somebody step in from the inside or elevating them briefly.
Actually, I would like to interrupt you, because I would like someone internally, possibly, or externally. I'm open to both. And I feel like this transition of power is normal in all organizations. So, I have a completely different feel about this whole situation. I'm currently in the dean's search, and, you know, at U of M Dearborn. It's common to have deans come and go, and things that transition very smoothly. It's normal. We can all take a breath and know that things are going to work out for our students. Our parents are going to be taken care of. That's how I feel, at least, with this whole process. But I am open to an internal interim, because I think they have the skill set that we're looking for, probably. They know about our district.
And I'm also open to an internal as well.
Well, I would just say this. If it proves to be a very short period of time, I think you might want to seriously consider that versus bringing somebody in from the outside. That's just my opinion, though. And again, I'm going to leave it to you folks to end up having that debate and discussion and end up telling me what it is you'd like me to do for you on that front.
Has anyone that's not opposed to an internal candidate had conversations with anyone internally about that, like, just one-on-one with staff or anything? Because I've been trying to poke around on that information, and I'm not finding out that there's adequate interest.
If, again, if there was possible interest on your part, I could approach even your own folks on that, if you'd like.
I think there is interest.
Yeah.
But so, can I suggest this, though? I hear you saying, too, you don't want to kind of wait until July to get, I hear that. But I do think we're putting the cart a little bit before the horse in getting into a long discussion about the interim. We've got a lot of work to jump into with this now. And I, let's get the ball rolling on this. And then if you folks want to pick up the discussion about, are you open to internal or external? If it's external, what type of, what critical skills do we think they need to have, so that you're in a position to tell me?
It's kind of like when we were talking about the search firm versus in-state, out-of-state.
Yeah.
We want good candidates. So, we don't need to get hung up on this word, internal, external. We need good candidates. And again, I'm going to, you think we're putting the cart before the horse. I think this is the most important issue. We cannot leave our staff out to dry without a leader who is prepared and ready, and whether they're physically starting or not, but mentally getting ready July 1, to take this district through a massive transition in September. And so, I think it's more important than the main superintendent search at this point. And I think, as a board, we need to come up with, really define next steps on how we handle it.
So, to your point, you already volunteered to be one of the committee members. Who are the other two folks?
Phyllie, you know?
For the interim.
I volunteer as well.
Okay. You got two. Who's the third person?
I could be on the, I could be on the interim.
Perfect. Thank you.
Moving forward.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Just to clarify, just one month, one point on the day. Pat's last is July 31st.
Right.
So, we have a committee, but is everyone okay with us having an interim? We're good with possibly having an interim?
Same thing. We need an interim.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to make sure before I was like, "The cart before the horse."
Unless this comment have no interim or...
I just wanted to make sure I was like...
You have to, no, you have to have it.
You're required. You can't.
Okay. So, that answers my question, doesn't it?
I'm just, you know, keep fairness in decisions.
Okay. Got it. Okay.
All right, we're good.
I just, I may regret doing this. I'll plant one last thought out there. On that same note, if, even in a worst-case scenario, if there was a slight gap even between when the interim can start and the time that your current superintendent left, let's say there was a week's gap or so, you could temporarily appoint somebody internally as your acting superintendent, so that somebody has the title during that time and can bear their responsibility. If you have to, although I totally agree, I'm not advising you're casual about it, I'm just saying in a pinch, but I hear loud and clear that you want to make sure that you've got all that laid out and ready, so that the person's ready to step right in.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, going back to that five-week time period, I'm even reluctant to tell you how many people have applied. Sometimes boards get answered, they understand, "I can't tell you who, but tell us how many." I'm reluctant, because the number can be really misleading, too, in a couple of different ways. Number one, it's not so much about the number of people who've applied, but the quality of the people who've applied. And I mean that very sincerely. I've seen searches where it's not a large number, but the people in the pool are strong, and that is more important. I've seen larger pools where I was concerned, because it was a little bit on the weaker side. The other part of that is that, quite often, applicants will submit their applications very late in the window, deliberately. I used to do that, partly because I liked to have the opportunity, even when it was done, to walk away from it, revisit it. Maybe there's something, I could think of a better way to word this. Maybe I could, there's something I might want to add that I didn't think of when I did this before. I would typically sit on it and submit it just before the deadline. And I've talked to other folks who I know do that, too. So, I would hate to give you a number, because your minds might race as to, "Oh, my gosh, we're doing terribly. We're not getting enough applicants." Or even if you saw a larger number, "Oh, this is great," but, you know, again, that doesn't speak to quality. So, it's a quiet five-week period for you folks. I'm just kind of forewarning you.
Do we have the opportunity, do we have to wait until July 7th to see all of them at once, or as they're trickling in, so we can spend more time, quality time? Can we look at them during the five-week period?
Due to the confidentiality request, we sit on that, and we, that's per the Open Meetings Act. That's the only time in a superintendent's search where that applies, where you can go into closed session. So, during the week of July 10th, where we would have that meeting, I would bring those applications to you. We'd go into closed session. I would have a spreadsheet ready for you that lists all of the candidates. It shows their work history, the degrees that they hold. And I'm breaking them down into three categories for you, because you're going to be taking in a lot of information and having to make some decisions in a relatively short period of time, right? So...
So, just again, going back to, whether it's right or wrong, the process that I went through. So, what we did was, all the candidates, you know, we got their applications and the search firm presented and gave windows of opportunity to board members and said, "Pick a window of two, you know, two hours at a time, and whatever. Let's just say X amount of, you know, all the candidates, you have the opportunity, if you want to or not, to go in and review, read their resumes, cover letter, so it's not a pressured time during this closed meeting." That was, again, a process that we, as a board, thought was instrumental to kind of just see what the candidate pool was. That's just a suggestion from what we did last time.
We could arrange something like that, where we made the applications available to you and provided the window of opportunity for you to, it wouldn't be in your possession, you'd be able to come in and see them, and...
Yeah, I think we went in two at a, I think they were, right, Rebecca, remember? Two at a time. We went into one of the rooms here, and we reviewed it. We had a two-hour window, and then everyone...
I'll just tell you, for my comfort level, I wouldn't want you even to do it two at a time, because one of the things that I'd be telling you for the closed session is, you can't be deliberating at all, right? But if you're in a room with two people, it's hard to resist temptation. I guess I'm saying, I want to maybe keep you out of trouble.
I think I'm missing...
I know we didn't do that. I think it was just...
I'm missing something. I'm not understanding why we aren't able to see every candidate. I understand that, I understand that they've asked to be confidential. Every application that came through, we're going to be able to see, because...
Ultimately, you're seeing all of them, yes.
We will. I guess maybe your question is, why can't we, and I'm trying to think last time, if there's some database of candidate, like, why can't we just independently, on our own, or maybe it's a confident, go in and read them all at our, at our own time?
I thought John indicated he'd be sharing a portfolio of every single candidate, but he'd be ranking them ahead of him.
In your closed session, but what I'm hearing asked is, why couldn't we send you those applications in advance?
Send a PDF, right? But the risk is, in theory, right, not that we would do it, right? Now, we have 50 PDFs if accidentally it went out.
That is the risk, and that's more of it. That's not a, that's not a personal thing. That's an organizational thing, that we're reluctant to send these out in advance in that way. But what you're asking is something we don't typically do. What we could do is make them available for a short period in advance of the actual meeting.
You give it to us, we review, then you take them all back.
Yeah. I would like to see them all in advance of the meeting.
Yeah. And that's what we ended up, as a board, we couldn't just get a PDF sent to us at home that we could look at it. But it gives all, I'm just making up a number of 50. They're on a desk, and we all pick a window, an hour, let's just say, one at a time. Megan goes from 10 to 10 to 11, or whatever the window is.
Right.
And we all have that window to go, and then we give it back to the search firm.
Sounds like we have a...
I suppose that would be helpful.
We could do that. Okay.
To see all the details.
Given the time, it's, we are, we're going to definitely be over your, your average, because we are only at item number. So, if we can, we've made a decision.
Yes.
We're going to be able to see the items in advance, and so, thank you, John. Thanks.
So, in the closed session, I'll provide a spreadsheet. I'll group the candidates into three groups, and you're going to see everybody who applied, right? Groups A, B, and C. A would be the people who, in my estimation, and this really is the one time in the search I'm weighing in in any way, shape, or form. Otherwise, I step back. It's totally your call. In Group A will be the people who, in my opinion, have the most relevant experience and maybe who most fit the bill in terms of what you're looking for. In Group B will be people who are qualified and, you know, potentially may fit the bill, maybe not quite as experienced or up to par with that first group, but certainly people that you may want to consider. Group C would be people who either are literally unqualified, or there may be other issues that I'm aware of, that in my mind would very likely disqualify them from your consideration. And the reason I do that is just simply to expedite the process. What I'll emphasize now and then is, you can pick anybody. No matter how I've categorized them, let's say there's 25 applicants, you can pick any of the 25 to interview, right? No matter what I say. So, I want to be clear about that. I'm going to group them to assist you, not to direct you. It's ultimately your decision.
And just on the process, let's say, because apparently everyone wants to be superintendent of the district is reaching out to Megan. So, what would be, what would be the process, what would be the process if, let's just say, one of us has a potential candidate or a community member, you know, has a potential candidate? Do they go to Michelle via you or to you? I mean, how would you prefer?
Are you talking about the interim?
No, no, no. Not, no, not the interim. Not the interim. Like, you know, Megan knows, you know, her buddy down the block, who's, would be a good candidate. Would she go to Michelle?
We can recruit.
No, no, but, no, but we, but they can apply. Like, again, like, what is...
I can, I can answer that. Item five on the agenda. I'll get to it now. It's okay. Candidate recommendations is exactly that. If you know of anybody who you believe could be a viable candidate for this position, and you would hope that they may consider applying, I would urge you not to reach out yourself. You give me the information I need. Give me their name. If you can give me their current position, contact information would be even better. But if you don't have it, I'll be able to find it. I will reach out to them on your behalf. And the way I do that, I try to be careful. I don't even say, "A member of the board told me that, you know, I should contact you." I just tell them, "I heard from someone in the district that you're someone who could be a good fit. They're hopeful that you are aware of the posting and that you're considering it. I'm hoping the same thing. If you haven't seen the posting, can I send it to you? Take a look. Ask me any questions that you might have. Let's talk about this further." And I do what I can to simply encourage them to give it serious consideration, right? So, and you can give me zero names. If you don't have anybody, you can give me one. You can give me five. It makes no difference. But I would encourage you absolutely, if you know of anybody like that, to share that with me. And I, the promise to you is, I will absolutely follow up with any name that I'm given.
Got it.
How typical, or has it, is this usually not the thing, where a person who may be tapped and says, "Oh, I would love to be interim"? Is that typically someone who doesn't intend to apply for the full-time position?
Yes. And I would suggest even that it really shouldn't be somebody who's an applicant for the position, only because that can get pretty awkward, right? If you've identified somebody to be your interim, at the same time, they're part of your candidate field, and you're interviewing them to be your permanent superintendent, and you don't pick them, but you're going to have them be your interim, that can get a little bit awkward. So, normally, the two don't intertwine. Normally, there's...
Universities, that's common, I think, to be an interim and then apply and go through the process.
Well, if it, if it happens to where somebody is your interim, and now you begin a search, and that interim has interest, what I'm saying is, the way this is ordered, where you're starting a search, and then you're saying, before the search is done, "We're going to have a need for an interim," that's where it can be awkward to try to have that person be one and the same. That's all.
This is a very intentional, like, it's hopefully a defined amount of time, and the people that I would expect to fill that position would be the kind of people that only wanted to work for a defined amount of time. They wouldn't be like, "Oh, shucks. I really wanted to," you know what I mean? Like, it's a limited pool of people that would fill that role.
Well, generally, you're talking about retirees, right?
Exactly.
And so, those, the retirees are not likely to be the people who will apply, although the law has changed. And since the law has changed, I've known of some people who retired, either as superintendents or central administrators, whatever, who thought they were done. But now that the law has changed to where they're not limited in how much money they can make in a given year, they can come to work for you full-time as your superintendent. And it's not out of the realm of possibility that you could have a retiree or more than one who still feels like they've got a lot left to give and could submit an application. It could happen.
All right. So, we checked out number five, Michelle.
That's right. That helps. All right. So, on that same night, then, we'll, and you can't deliberate, come out of closed session, that's when you pick in public who it is you want to interview. Here's the process we use that has worked really well for us. I will have a letter designation by each of the candidates on the spreadsheet that I give you. When you come out into open session, generally, what I ask is that each of you, one at a time, individually, that what you do in closed session is you're making a decision independently, yourself, which of these candidates would I like to invite into interview? And then publicly, by letter, you're sharing that. So, you may say, "I'd like to interview candidates A, B, C, X, Y, and Z." You may have some similar, some... candidates A, B, C, X, Y, and Z. You may have some similar, some, each of you's going to have that opportunity. And I don't, almost always, it lands in the four to six range, oddly enough, almost always. But I never tell boards it has to be a given number. I don't want to do that because it's a little bit ludicrous. If you've got more than six candidates who are worth interviewing, interview them. If you've got fewer than four, that's okay too, right? Whatever it is. I'm just telling you, it's kind of uncanny, it's almost always four to six. So there's no even number you have to hit when you come out of closed session and say, well, I have to give you this many letters. Whoever you think is worth interviewing, who could potentially be your next superintendent, if you go through an interview process and you're impressed enough, you identify by letter, I'm tallying it all up. Once you've done that, I'm reading it back to you. Seven of you said you're interested in candidate A. Six of you said candidate C. Four of you said candidate G, whatever the case might be. And so it becomes quickly evident where there's built-in kind of board consensus on which candidates you have interest in interviewing. What I would suggest then is that somebody makes a motion that includes by letter those candidates. Once it's seconded, you can have discussion. What you have to be careful of in the discussion is where that typically goes is, let's say there was somebody who three of you liked and they didn't make the motion, right? But you want to lobby your colleagues to say, you know, I really think there's a lot to like, three of us have interest, can you support adding this person as another candidate? You just have to be really careful not to inadvertently reveal who they are. So if you're talking about why you want them to be included, you can say things like, I appreciate the fact that they have a lot of experience at the K-12 level. I appreciate that they've kind of, they've got longevity in their positions. They have kind of followed the, they have broad experience, they've been a teacher, they've been a principal, they've been all these different, so without giving specifics about where they work or what position they hold. And if somebody then would like to amend the motion and say, I think I can support that, then you could add a name to it. Then you're going to go ahead ultimately and vote. And once the motion is approved, I would go ahead, for anybody who's listening, read aloud, confidentiality's gone at that point, I'd read aloud who it is you just selected to interview and the current positions that they hold. When I talk to the candidates in advance, I'll be forewarning them that that's how this is going to go. And I'm letting them know, if you're selected that night, just know that as soon as the board selects you, your confidentiality's gone, right? Your name is out there. So if there's anybody you need to tell in advance, you better tell them, right? Because the word's going to get out quickly. I also, that night, call those people at the end of the meeting and get them on the interview schedule and confirm that they've been selected. Everybody else, and I'm telling them this in advance too, it's going to be probably late, I'm not calling everybody who's applied that night. I'll follow up, hopefully by the next day, normally so, with a text or an email, just to confirm what they should already know, because I do tell them too, if you don't get a call from me that night, you can safely assume you weren't selected. But I confirm that in writing somehow, just so that they formally know. Go ahead.
What if someone's not available to interview the week that we're doing interviews?
Well, that's a really good question. Ultimately, it would come down to whether or not you were willing to alter this timeline and the interview schedule, et cetera, to accommodate a particular individual. I will tell you, the other consideration might be if somebody had a conflict and they were unavailable to be present physically, and this, you know, could apply to an out-of-state candidate too, for example. Suppose you've got somebody in California who's applied and the interviews take place the following week and they've got, it's just going to be, for whatever reason, too difficult for them. If you're willing to conduct in the first round, at least, a virtual interview, that may help to accommodate any conflicts. I would suggest, I think it's okay in the first round, because the first round's a little bit more of a screener anyway. You may love somebody on paper, but if you've been through interviews before, I have been through a lot, sometimes you can tell in the first five minutes, nope, you know, this is not the right person for us. So the first round interview can be a bit of a screener. If there's anybody even you interview virtually, and I don't advocate for it, I'm staying in a pinch, who you like well enough, I would think you have to insist at that point that they're present physically for the rest of the process and you make a decision from that.
So a question here about the process. So if we come out of that meeting and agree as a board or not, like, if we're going to, in your experience, the first round of interviews and we come to consensus with, you know, four to six, does that necessarily mean that we all think those four to six could potentially be our next superintendent, meaning that, you know, after the first screening and then the second screening, when would we as a board make a decision that we need to go back in the pool? Is it before that or could it be any time in the process?
So the first thing I want to encourage you to do, really, is because I've heard multiple times now, what if we don't like anybody? I'm going to, and it's a valid question, but I'm just going to really encourage you to go into this with a positive mindset, right?
Not saying I'm not.
No, no, but I'm saying I've heard it enough times that I think it's there, right? A little bit of a concern. So I would just say this, honestly, that could happen at any point in this process. If you were to come out of closed session and I go around, and let's suppose that a majority of the board says, I don't want to interview any of these people. I don't think any of them meet our qualifications, have the relevant experience that we're looking for, whatever, that's what you would say as an individual if that proved to be the consensus of the board and that was what the motion was, that we don't invite any of these people into interview. The next conversation we have is, now what do we do? And that's what we'll talk about. If after the first round of interviews, what I'm going to ask you to do is come back, we'll follow a similar process where each of you individually, now you can identify by name, of course, will be able to say, here are the people I would like to invite back as finalists. And I encourage you at that point to speak a little bit as to why, not to talk in the negative about why you don't want people, but to advocate, here's why, I think, to maybe help influence your fellow board members. But again, that's at the stage too. If a majority of the board at that point feels like, we've interviewed six candidates, we don't think any of them should advance, then we have that conversation, where do we go from there? Even if you get to two finalists and ultimately it's time to decide and you've reached that conclusion then, same story. So at any point in the process, if you really feel like you don't have who you need, if that's where the majority of the board lies in terms of your opinion and where your vote lands, then that's the way it is. And again, the very next conversation is what are our options going forward and where do we go from here?
Yeah, I'm not saying that as like to not be positive, I'm just saying that, no, I mean, listen, I went through this, you know, I went through this once, I know a lot of boards and I've spoken to a lot of people since, you know, our superintendent decided to retire. Sometimes boards feel, or people feel you're at a point of no return, whether that's the first interview process, you know, you're selected then, you know, selected, you're interviewed, it's like, well, we have to, almost have to select somebody of the six, of the people that we decide to interview and especially second interview.
I will be the first person to tell you that you cannot and should not ever settle when you're selecting a superintendent. You cannot. And I'm telling you that, I, you know, I, it's more work for me if you have to stop and start over again, but you know what, I'd rather have you do that if you truly don't believe that you have the right person in the mix yet.
And that could be like the final interview, if it's a final two.
At any stage in this process.
If the final two is a board, we're like, nope.
Anytime you're at a decision-making point, when you're deciding who to interview, when you're deciding who to advance as finalists, and when you're deciding who to select, at any of those points, if a majority of you feels like you need to start over, because you don't have the right person in the mix yet, in the process yet, that's the decision and that's where we go from.
Okay.
No worries.
So I do want to just bring up really quick for you, John, on the timeline. So looking at the week of July 17th, that's the week of the first round of interviews. Currently, none of us have over, not all of us are available on any given day.
So let's do, let's do this, Michelle, if we can. Let's go through the rest of this because I think it'll help kind of...
I thought you were still on the timeline, sorry.
No, 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 no. We are. But in going through the timeline, it's going to enable us to kind of envision the steps from beginning to end.
Okay.
And then I want to go back and try to identify specific dates within this and where we need to adjust this, we will.
I will hold.
That's okay. So once you, that night that you are selecting candidates, you're also going to select interview questions. We provide you with a bank of questions to choose from. In the first round, we ask that you all, you ask the same questions of every candidate in the same order, same person asking the questions. You're going to have more than you need to choose from that we'll provide to you. I can get those to you in advance, so you can have a chance to review them. So that night, you won't be seeing them for the first time. But that night, we can discuss them and you can let me know of these questions here. They're broken down by category too. Seven categories of questions matching seven board members. Each of you would take a group of questions, typically it's three questions each. And so if there's five or six questions in that group, you're all going to give me my marching orders and say, okay, here are the three out of this group that we want to ask. When it comes time to interview, I'll come in with all of those questions prepared. I'll have a set for each of the candidates that you're going to interview with lots of room for notes. I'll have them bound and in front of you, so you won't have to do anything. It goes back to me trying to make this easy for you. But that night is when, you'll have seen them, but that night is when you'll identify those questions. Second round's different, I won't get too far into it now, but then we can differentiate a little bit, to some extent, on questions we ask the candidates and the candidates, the questions may be more about where are there still gaps in our knowledge or understanding about these people? What do we still need to know? I'll still provide you with a bank of questions potentially to choose from. But we'll get into that dialogue too, about kind of what you might want to be thinking about, about those questions. So, so we'll go through the first round interviews, that's the week of July 17th or whenever it needs to be. We normally advise that you don't do any more than two per night because we have a maximum amount of time, not a minimum. So there's a hard stop at 90 minutes. They can go up to an hour and a half. Some people are very verbose and we, there's a point in the interview where you have to remind them or let them know, we're this far into the interview, we have this many questions left, you may need to pick up the pace. But it hasn't happened often, but in the unlikely event that somebody has not finished answering questions and we've hit 90 minutes, they're done. That's it. And we tell them this in advance. So they've got fair notice, they know it, it's their responsibility to go at a pace where they're going to be able to get all the questions in. And again, we tell them gently, friendly reminder during the course of the interview, if they're going slowly, that they need to pick it up. Sometimes they'll finish earlier. I've seen really nervous candidates a couple times finish what could be a 90-minute interview in 45. It happens, right? So be it. But because potentially, you could have two 90-minute interviews and normally we say like a 10-minute break in between for you to get up and stretch, you're talking over three hours. For you to add a third interview, if you tell me you've got the stamina and the wherewithal to do it and you'd like to, I'm fine with it. We don't recommend it because you can tend to start fading your attention with the third one and you don't want that to happen in short change of candidates. So normally we say two per night. So the week that we have these happen, so if we were to say the week of July 17th, here's what we'd be staring at. That is the most intense week of the whole process for you, whenever we have it. Because we would, right now, assuming that we're going to have five to six candidates, in case we do, we would schedule three nights for interviews, starting whenever you say, 6 o'clock, whenever the time is. And what we recommend is you schedule yet another night, a fourth night to come back, to give you the chance to walk away from the interviews, reflect on everything that you've seen and heard, review the materials again. Almost certainly, each of the candidates is going to give you additional materials. You're going to get their application, resume, and cover letter. Virtually guaranteed, they're going to come in and give you more. So you're going to want some time to read their additional materials, maybe after hearing from them, review what they said again in the applications, right, and take a look at all of that. We're also going to provide your constituents with the opportunity to provide you with feedback. So anybody who's present, and you could even do it for people watching virtually, you can provide them with a link or a QR code, so that they can provide you with their feedback. What did they hear from this candidate that they liked? What did they hear from the candidate that perhaps caused concern? And are there outstanding questions they may still have about this candidate?
So just recalling, and I think Rebecca remembers this, so I think what we did last time is we, right, we opened up on our, was it like an email, Rebecca, like, sort of like a website where people would put in their feedback and it would come to, all the board would get emails. Like, I remember getting like a...
For during the interviews?
For, no, the feedback from community members after the interviews. After the interviews, we opened up, I forgot what it was, it was like a portal and then we would all get emails with...
It was cards.
Yeah. No, not cards, the portal and the email where people would go in, there was, there was like a link on our website where people would put in feedback on the final two candidates and that would come to the board. And the board would read that feedback between the final interviews and the decision-making process.
I'll have to look through that summary.
I guess Emma, I guess you haven't seen that before.
We would want to do that after first round interviews and after second round interviews. You want to give people the chance to let you know what they think. One thing that I've seen a couple districts do that I thought was fairly slick, so that it's all coming to you in the same way, is rather than hand a piece of paper to the people who are present to write down their thoughts, you can hand them a card with a QR code. It takes them to the same link and so all of the feedback is going to the same place and then you get to see all of it. But all the more reason that after you finish the first round interviews, you walk away and come back another night because you want to have had a chance to look at all that feedback, additional materials, and just a chance to clear your head and reflect a little bit before making what's a pretty big decision, which is to narrow the field down from whatever it is to start with, down to typically it's two or three finalists.
So, so John, we're doing three days of, or three evenings of first round interviews?
Yes.
And the fourth evening to debate among us?
It's not debate, we go back to that same process. Each of you's going to say, here are the people I'd like to advance and here's why. We'll see where there's consensus. You'll have a motion, you can have further discussion and you take a vote.
So that would be on the fourth evening?
That'd be the fourth night, yes.
And so, have you seen it where the candidate interviews are in one week and the decision-making in the following, or do you like to do it all four evenings in one week?
I prefer to do it in one week if you have the stamina for it. I think while it's fresh in your mind, you're better off than walking away. And frankly, you know, you, you sometimes, it's good to get feedback from your stakeholders, but you don't necessarily want the lobbying to begin. And if you have a long period of time between the last interview and your decision, you can get some of that happening too, where you get campaigns going for candidates and it can get a little bit out of hand. So in my experience, you're better off in that same week making that decision, although it doesn't have to be that. It could go into the next week if you prefer to. But that's my advice.
I'm going to guess the last week, the next week is finalist interview, so...
Yeah, but again, if, I mean, depending on what your preferences are, we may have to modify this anyway. So, and then the other thing we would do that night, that's the very first order of business, that typically doesn't take a long time. But then we talk further about what comes next, second round interviews, questions, et cetera, right? So that, that last night mercifully is typically not as long as the first three. But I'm telling you, of the entire search process, that is the most intense week for you folks by far. So just know that and kind of be ready for it. So now you go into, per this timeline, week of July 24th, we would have the finalists come in, let's, for discussion's sake, let's say there's two. We would ask you typically to separate those and have them on separate nights, even though in terms of timing, you could do them both on the same night, because we have the candidates who may be coming from places far from here, come into the district during the course of the day. So they spend the day and we have a schedule in place where we have an opportunity for various stakeholder groups to come onsite, meet those folks, ask them questions, interact with them. And then again, we ask them to provide, we can give another QR code, provide additional feedback to the board. We've had a chance to meet this person, interact with them, here's, here's my thoughts, all right? So you're going to get quite a trove of additional information from that. We give them a chance to get a dinner break and clear their head and then they come back and they have a second interview with you. The second interview with you, normally we have up to 80 minutes, but in this case, it includes a presentation on a topic of your choosing. And so if there's a particular topic where you think it's going to be worthwhile to hear a response in far more detail than they can give to a typical interview question, you're going to end up deciding that and you're going to be able to tell me, here's what we'd want to hear from them present on. What I tell the candidates typically is schedule it so, time it so that you're doing about 20 minutes for a presentation and about 60 for an interview. So we ask about two questions per board member in the second interview and think of that as being about 60. But I don't time each part of that. We simply time it at 80 and I tell the candidates that. So if you take longer on the presentation, fewer time on the questions, if you take shorter time on the presentation, you've got a longer time to answer questions. But we're capping it at 80. So for the candidates, it's a long day. They're here all day, interacting with stakeholders, taking a break, coming back and having this interview with you. For you folks, you're just coming in in the evening, having that second interview and that's it.
And, sorry, go ahead.
No, just, just on that, just recall, we could tweak it or not, I just recall, the final two candidates, each of them... final two candidates, each of them started out at like 8 o'clock in the morning, it was with Brian Govey at the time, I'll say it was Jacob Wright, and going through the van, went to visit each of the schools, as many as they could. They had like a timeframe from like 8 to 11, and then had like a luncheon, I think, at the high school, where they, you know, they met staff. And then, I forgot, there was something else that liked, and then they had like a reception here at 5, right, where they met some more stakeholders, and then they went into the interview. The only thing I was thinking, and I don't know if this is innovative, what other districts do, is that, trying to hit as many buildings as possible, and with board members present, and then seeing how they interact in the buildings, the spur of the moment.
So it's a great question. Two things to keep in mind. One, this is falling during the summer.
True.
So your buildings are going to be unoccupied, which is a bit of a challenge, right?
They can meet the construction curve.
Well, true. But secondly, and we'll get to it, when we talk about a possible site visit, and it says here, "or alternative," what you just described typically is, one of the alternatives that we talk about, is that we do something along those lines, rather than having some board members go out to the work site, which I'll get back to momentarily. So if that makes sense, if you have, again, two finalists, two nights for you, two long days for those finalists, you're making zero decisions that week, at all. But you're going to be getting a lot of feedback, because you'll get feedback from the people who participate during the day, you'll get additional feedback from the people who watch the interviews in the evening. But we would want to get you quick access to all of that, so that you have lots of time to go through it. Go ahead.
John, when is the topic for their presentation typically decided? Is it decided on the fourth night of the first round, when the board's debating?
Yes. I'll get you thinking about it in advance. I'm getting you thinking about it now, actually, but I'll remind you as we go along. But the idea would be, when we're here to gather together, you can make a collective decision that night about what that topic would be. So at the end of that night, obviously, once you've selected finalists, I'm letting those individuals know, I'm telling them what the topic of the presentation is. Every step of the way, by the way, I always follow up with probably too much information for the candidates. I give them very lengthy emails, that gives them every bit of detail they may need to know, so they can be fully prepared. Not interview questions, not preparing them in that way, or guiding them on how to answer, but just all of the details, where to go, what to expect, how many questions, how much time, et cetera.
So as an example, last time, our topic was, present to the board, your 90-day plan. What would be your 90-day plan?
As an example. I know some districts would choose that. Okay? So you've gotten through that week, then, where you've conducted finalist interviews, we've had those stakeholder meetings, and then, per this, week of July 31st, you'd be prepared to do site visits. So let me get into that briefly. That would be a subcommittee of the board, no more than three of you, who would travel to the work site of the individuals that are the finalists. You would have the opportunity to interact with selected groups of stakeholders. And when I say selected, and let me get through all this to answer what I think your response might be. They would select people from various groups, and have them present for you to be able to meet, and ask any questions that you might have, to see if kind of what you see and hear here is what you get, right? The skepticism comes from people who say, if the candidates are the ones choosing who we're going to talk to, they're just going to pick people who are going to say nice things, aren't we just wasting our time? I can understand that thinking. I'm just telling you that I've done this so many times, and I typically press boards afterward, because I want to know, too, is this value added, is this worthwhile? But what they tell me is that typically what I let tell you now proves to be true. You can learn so much from people, when you're sitting face-to-face with a group of people, and you're asking questions, and they have a chance to respond. You can have the range of people tripping over themselves, wanting to get a word in, to say wonderful things about this person, getting emotional about it, because they're upset that the person might leave. You can just tell how well-respected and loved and admired this person is, and how successful, versus, they'll answer your questions, and they'll typically, it's true, they know that, kind of, they're there to say positive things, but there's not a lot of enthusiasm behind it. You might see one member of the group speaking, and, you know, conversely, where you may see other people wanting to jump in, they're looking down, they're kind of not making eye contact, it's pretty apparent that you're not feeling the love there, right? So I have had boards tell me that that was the absolute difference-maker for them. If they had two strong finalists, and they were struggling with the decision, that site visit did them a world of good. The downside is that no more than three of you can go, just, it's an Open Meetings Act thing. So we would depend, I would advise, it's the same three board members, if you can, for consistency, that those three board members then fashion a collective summary for the rest of the board. Not a recommendation, but a summary, here's what we saw, here's what we heard, you know, here's who we talked to at this site, and at this site, so that the others can benefit from the experience, too. And it's one more data piece for you to consider. The alternative that we typically offer is, honestly, very close to what you just described, where we'd have the person come into the district, we'd take them on a tour, you can be present to see how they're interacting with folks, have a bit of a meet-and-greet. If you feel that there would be more value added by doing something like that versus the site visit, absolutely, we could do something like that instead. And that's not a decision that you have to make tonight by any means. I'm just putting all of that on your radar.
I mean, just the problem in both areas, you identified, or Michelle identified, it's the summertime, right?
So from that standpoint, honestly, the site visit would be probably more valuable in that if the candidate was gathering people together for you to meet with various stakeholders to talk to, they can still get people there in the summer, versus if you bring a candidate into your district, you're right, people aren't here. You could put an invitation out for people to come for that purpose, though. And, you know, I don't know what kind of response you would get. So I think potentially, you could still make that work, too. But again, you've got time to think about that. That's not a decision you have to make tonight. I just wanted to put both of those things on your radar. And then you would come back together the following week, and now you've got a lot of data to consider. You've got the applications, cover letters, resumes, additional materials that the candidates have provided, feedback forms from the interviews, feedback forms from the stakeholder groups, feedback from the site visits. You've got a lot to consider. And frankly, all throughout this process, your folks are going to be digging to find out what they can about your candidates, they're going to be telling you what they think, you're going to have a lot of data to consider. It's going to be the same format, we'll go around the table, each of you's going to have a chance to say, here's who I'd like to select as our next superintendent, and here's why. Presumably, there'll be consensus, we'll vote, and you will have selected your new superintendent. Then it's a matter of negotiating the contract, what we advise. We can help with that, but not as much as the negotiation itself, as much as just to advise, is this appropriate to include in the contract, what do you think about this? We advise in advance, you get with your legal counsel, and have them draft kind of the bones of a contract, get the language straight that you might like, and get that all kind of worked out. The only thing you would need to plug in, based on the candidate's experience, et cetera, is ultimately, what salary rate are we going to put him at, and maybe what benefit level. Although even those, you could take a bit of a stab at in advance, and see if you want to tweak it, based on who the candidate is. Because the best thing is, the sooner you can, after you select the candidate, as your first offer, provide them with a draft of that contract, and then give them a chance to review it. Some of them will want to go to their own legal counsel and have it reviewed. They may want to come back and suggest changes, there could be a negotiation. But if you're ready to jump on that, you're going to expedite the process, and it'll go faster. And then, once you have the contract worked out, at a public meeting, officially, formally, you're going to approve their hiring as your next superintendent.
I noticed on Superintendent Watson's contract, there's a normal 60-day period where he gives notice that he's leaving. So I noticed that the timeframe was August 7th. That doesn't really give us the 60-day typical period, I'm assuming, to have the superintendent give notice to his or her other district.
So I'll tell you, even from experience, even when people have something like that in the contract, I have yet to see a district that hung someone up and said, you can't leave until your 60 days is up. It goes back to districts feeling like, you want to go, they want you, we want to move along, too, and, again, could it happen? Sure. I've never seen it happen. Districts typically will release the person fairly quickly. This is a little bit ambitious, perhaps, but if all goes amazingly well, you get the contract negotiated quickly, get it approved, person gives a couple of weeks' notice, it could happen this quickly, but it could take longer.
Is there a distinction between the time period required for central office candidates versus superintendents?
Not that I've seen.
Okay.
What was that question, Siva?
So I had heard from somewhere that if you're a superintendent of a district, you're required to give 60 days' notice, but if you're from the central office, you're an assistant superintendent, let's say, you don't need to give 60 days' notice.
Oh, I misunderstood your question, Siva. I think you're right about that. A lot of times, contracts of assistant supes, other central administrators, are, they're either part of a collective bargaining agreement, or they're kind of, they're all patterned after one another. And you're right, far less often do they include a 60-day notice type of a thing.
So it's more like 30 days, is what I was told? Or it depends on the...
It depends. But what I was referring to is, even in those cases, I, you typically don't see districts hang anybody up and hold them to that. They let them, they release them pretty quickly.
One of the things, just, you know, talking about the final process, get your guidance, and I know this was something that last time as a board, we decided to do. So we could deliberate, and it come up to a split deliberation, right? You know, and then eventually get two, four people at least, if not more, deciding on candidate X over candidate Y.
Yep.
Then the vote, right, as a collective board, you know, support, obviously, our new superintendent with a 7-0 vote, you know? I mean, we get to the deliberation, right, to get to that point where four or more is where we spend most of the time, and then the vote ends up being 7-0.
That's what we strongly advise, that you will have had a chance, bear in mind, each speaking individually, so you're not deceiving anybody. Publicly, you will have already said to people, I want this other person, right? So, but the right thing to do, I think, to show board unity, and to immediately get behind the person who clearly is about to become your next superintendent, because the majority of the board supports that, is for everybody to vote yes, when it comes time to the vote. You do not have to. So when I say I advise board members to do that, that's all it is. You, independently, if, as an individual, you're uncomfortable with that, you don't have to. It's really good practice to do it that way, though. Now, maybe you'll get lucky, and all seven of you are going to want the same person anyway, right? And it happens. But if not, I think that is absolutely the best way to go.
Yeah, that's, to your point, right? It's a recommendation, right? You know, someone could be like, I, you know, I'm strongly, you know, don't want, why, for whatever reason.
Right.
You know, but that's usually a best practice, right?
Absolutely, it is.
I mean, that's a much bigger topic that I don't really want to dive into tonight, but this idea that voting no, I mean, this is a democratic process, and the implication that you voted no for something, I mean, this is just something across the board, with the board in general, that just because someone votes no, and states their opinion, we're not, we weren't elected to all, hang on, let me finish, to vote unilaterally and agree, it's okay to say, this wasn't my choice, and I'm voting no. And that doesn't imply that that person who voted no isn't able to get along with that person in the future, and be on the same page, and, but I just, I don't know, this is a common theme that I've heard since I was a board member, that publicly, we need to vote as seven and agree, and I just don't, I don't agree with that personally.
I'm not saying that, and I've voted no many times on topics, you know, even recently, that have been voted down. And I'm not saying, you know, anyone can do what we want, if we deliberate 4-3, and the vote comes out 4-3, so be it.
Right.
I've asked an opinion on what he's seen, and he gave us a recommendation, and we decided to do what we want to do.
Right. And you asked him an opinion, and I'm weighing in on the conversation, on my opinion, that this concept, at a school board level, that we have to give the appearance of seven unanimous votes, I think that disagreeing with each other, and seeing it differently, does not imply an inability down the road to get along with someone. So there's no need to get into it tonight, but this is just a strange concept that I've heard repeatedly since being a board member. I wasn't voted by the public to go along with what six other people did all the time publicly, and I just, I don't want to go down, I don't want to go down this road. If anyone else has anything to say, great, but it's just something that is recur, it's been a recurring theme, and I strongly disagree with it.
All I want to say is...
I'm sorry, I do.
No, all I want to say is, two different concepts of when we go around and vote on issues, you know, on a lot of issues, this is, this is, you know, again, it's going to be, as you said, in public, you know, I could be like, I don't want candidate X, I want candidate Y. And listen, I have a decision to make, whether, if the majority of the board, whether, you know, I'm going to, you know, publicly just say, no, can't ever get behind candidate X, so I'm just going to say no on the vote.
Yeah.
But whatever, you're right, we don't need to have this discussion now.
We're splitting words, but I just don't think it's the worst thing to say, this wasn't my choice. That doesn't mean I can't get along with, and in support, and be behind them in the future, but...
Yeah, my only point here is that, whether the vote is 4-3, or 7-0, 6-1, whatever, after the vote is done, if you came out on the 0-1-2-3 side, you support that decision. That's all that I ask of my fellow board members.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that, there's, it's not that we don't, it doesn't matter if we get along, but I think, once the vote has been had, whoever the superintendent is, we have to throw our support behind that person.
Sure.
All right.
Okay. So we have, I did warn you that item two is going to take a very long time, so, it maybe even took longer than we thought, but the rest of the agenda will not, but we need to, we do need to go back and look at now specific dates within this timeline, and see what's going to work for you folks. And I'm hearing already that, so the week of July 10th, let's just go in chronological order here.
Rebecca just sent, I was going to say, she just sent a proposed timeline, based on the doodle responses thus far, so everybody should have that.
Yeah.
Except for John.
Not everybody had responded to the doodle, so this is just what I laid out, is a possible solution, it might work. July 12th, looks like it works for the special meeting.
Is there, was there a conflict with the 13th? I just want to ask, because I may have a conflict with the 12th.
There's a conflict with the week of the 17th.
There isn't, while we could do the study session on the 12th, and have the selection, or the presentation of the candidates on the 13th, we could flip them.
Okay.
Possibly, if it worked for the group.
I just know for sure I could do the 13th, I'm a little iffy on the 12th.
How long does that take, that meeting?
That meeting, that's, that can be a long one, too. We typically have teleboards planned for about three hours.
Did you hear Rebecca's...
But again, sometimes it's longer.
Did you hear Rebecca's recommendation?
Or it could replace the study session.
So there's currently a study session on the 13th?
It's fine.
July's fine. Would you folks be okay with flipping those, study session on the 12th, this meeting on the 13th?
I will just offer, for our newer board members, the first study session in July is usually a planning meeting for the year ahead, as far as agendas, et cetera, so...
In my opinion, I think this is really important, very tight.
Timeline, I would propose to replace it, just my opinion.
So a replacement, so there's an option to replace the 13th study session with the presentation of the candidates, correct?
I can't do the 13th.
Are you kidding?
Yeah. I won't be able for that study session.
Okay, so the 13th won't work for you, nor the 12th?
I can do the 12th.
Oh, you can do the 12th?
Yeah.
Let's tentatively set the 12th, and let me see what I can do to make that work. So it'd be July, and what time would you want to do that? Again, knowing it could be, it likely be a long meeting.
I think we put 6 to 9 in what we were sending out.
Okay.
So...
So July 12th, 6 to 9, okay.
With no study session on the 13th, is that, or are we still having a study session on the 13th?
I don't, I'm okay.
I'd have to look at the agenda, I don't know, I don't recall.
It's just a planning session.
Okay, I don't, I mean, I'm okay with replacing, just completely.
We're just trying to make sure we're all, like, we're all knowing what we're doing on the 12th and the 13th.
Well, the 12th takes precedence over the 13th, clearly.
Yes.
Let's lock down the 12th. But I don't see a need to cancel the 13th study session, especially if you're setting the calendar for the rest of the year, right?
I just want to make sure we're all on the same...
We just need a quorum of five, four members to be here, but I think it's important to have that day to look at the planning calendar for the rest of the year.
Sure. I mean, as long as we have four people here, it's fine.
We can give an update to the committee on the superintendent search. It may be a light agenda.
It will not be a short meeting, just two late nights it will be.
Just to let the community know, it's my husband's 40th birthday on July 12th, so happy birthday.
Do you want us to bring cake?
Okay, so we've got that one, the 12th.
Who was not available on the 11th? No, I'm just kidding.
I would not.
I mean, there's not a lot available.
John.
I'm just kidding.
All right, 12th, it is.
All right, 12th, so next is the...
I was trying to help you.
So first round interviews, and I'm hearing that the week of the 17th may be a problem, is that right?
The week of the 17th, there were no consistent dates that worked with anyone's schedule. So the recommendation was the following week.
That's a worse week.
It's a worse week.
What I put together and emailed everybody is the best case scenario, I just don't know if there's any flexibility. Did I get this, Kev?
Just now, Rebecca to the board.
Yeah, I think we best we can, right? It's going to be impossible. You know, so I think Rebecca took best case scenario, threw it out there, and let's try to work with best case scenario, which was July 12th for the meeting, 17th to 19th the interviews, first round, 20th special meeting, July 25th first full day of finalists, 26th final day, 27th, we already have a board meeting, and we could reschedule if needed, there are three finalists, August 10th, we already have a meeting, we could use this for the selection of the superintendent. So I'll trust Rebecca's judgment on all of our calendars and go with that. My wife, if I have something going on, I'll just have to manage it.
I'm going to have to show everyone the 12th. So you hope so. My husband's more important to me than this board. I'm sorry, but I'm not getting a divorce over this.
I understand, I could believe it, that's why I said I tried to move it.
Does it have to be at night?
Not from my standpoint, it doesn't.
I won't be there during the day.
Any better on, at the end of the week, on that Friday?
I mean, it helps to just shift everything back. I can't be there on August 10th.
You can't be there any more.
Well...
What about the 13th, sorry?
13th, we have a meeting, but I think 13th did work for...
John said he could make it on the 13th. Is that right, John, you're unavailable on the 13th?
I'm not, yeah, so summer is the only time that I take any time off of work, and...
You don't need to sleep.
So July 13th, 16th, and then the first full week of August.
Where are you going, maybe we can all go there? Sounds exciting.
You and your family.
How does this get with virtual, I know they can't vote, right?
My, I could be wrong, so I'll confess that my understanding is that the only way you can have a board member participate in a meeting virtually is if it's related to an injury or illness.
Military or something.
Or, right, military.
We did, we made a provision for extenuating circumstances.
It assumes, yes, there's a provision, but it assumes risk. And that's what the board decides.
I don't think vacation, no offense, is extenuating circumstances.
Out of the country. Those kinds of things, yes, but vacation, absolutely not, sorry, John.
Well...
Birthday, sorry.
40th, so come on.
I will just say this, I mean, it's really important you're all there, so if none of these dates work, we better just keep working on the calendar, I suppose. If, it sounds like maybe there's no date during the week of July 10th that we can...
Well, if it's, I guess, if it's just, not that it's just an interview, but as an interview, it is live, it's recorded, right?
True.
So you could go back and watch the candidate. There are the same questions, you can go back and watch it.
That's a great point.
That's true.
Yes.
Yes, Rebecca.
Wait, are we talking about the 12th?
The week of the 10th.
What about July 11th? It's not on there for a reason, but I want to ask if there, if there's people available for the 11th.
Tuesday, the 11th. That's a problem for me at the moment, but if you can all do it, I'll try to find a way to work it out.
So 11th, 12th?
No, but seriously, if you all say you can make the 11th work, I'll make it my mission to find a way to make it work.
Is that available, July 11th?
Free, yes.
Yes.
July 11th.
I think the 11th it is, so. So if your wife's having her 40th, just do what...
I think I was available.
I'm older than that, but... I won't announce my wife's birthday publicly, her age. I could get myself in trouble.
Well, I can't wait till I can say I'm 50. I'm going to tell everyone, it's my birthday.
So July 11th, we're saying, then, yes?
I made it.
So does all the other dates in Rebecca's calendar work now that the 11th has clicked in? Are we okay with that whole timeline?
No, not the 10th of August.
All right, so let's go back for just a second, though. So we would be saying, then, the week of July 17th, you'd want to start interviews at 6:00 as well?
Yes.
Yes? So those four nights, so the 17th, 18th, and 19th, and again, it depends on how many people you pick, but we're just getting ready in case you get up to 6:00. You'd start at 6:00, and it would be 6:00 to roughly, you know, 9:15.
I said I wasn't available for 17th.
And then that fourth night, that Thursday, you'd start at 6:00, it'll be a shorter meeting, but we'll start, we'll check finalists and discuss second round.
Yep.
All right, so 17th, 18th, 19th, 20th, 6:00. Okay. And then the week of July, go ahead.
Why do we have all those dates? 18th, 19th.
If you have up to six interviews, two per night, you'll need three nights for the interviews, and then remember, we talked about coming back a fourth night, giving you a chance to deliberate on your own, and then come back and be prepared to make a decision on finalists.
Okay, I can miss one, that's fine.
Okay.
I'm good at watching.
Okay, then the week of the 24th, Rebecca had suggested of the 25th?
July 25th?
Yeah, so...
And 25th and 26th, for those you're saying.
Those would be full day, those assume full days, and then the finalist interviews begin at 6:00.
So I would ask for that, that we start the interviews at 7:00, to be able to get their kind of schedule filled during the day, give them a chance for a brief dinner break.
Can we give them a dinner break at, can they not?
7 to, it'd be 80 minutes, not even, right?
Could they have a dinner break at 5:00?
Yeah, I was just, we could do it 8:30 to 4:30, and then have them start at 6:00.
6 to 7, I think it's 8. Say, tell me again?
I was just going up what I did before, so like 8:30 to 4:30, and then they had the 90-minute break, and then they came for their interview.
At 6:00, can we do that?
We could.
Is the 25th and the 26th, those correspond with what you have on here, like, the week of the July 24th finalist interviews?
Yes.
So, and then, just to make sure I understand, the board is not present at all until, I mean, we're, so this is not, our time commitment is only...
Starting at 6:00.
Right, okay.
6:00 to roughly 8:20.
Okay.
Particularly because school is out for the summer.
Yep.
You may not have that much, you really do.
Okay, and then, thanks for doing this, Rebecca, this helps. And I like what you said, too, so if possible, it is possible you would select three finalists, we'd have to add a night, and we could do the 27th?
It's my wife's birthday.
Come on, Paul.
I'm just kidding.
And how old is she again?
And you have 6 days. So yes, we absolutely could if there's three finalists, but we would still need to have, there would actually be some board business that we need to do if we're placing something on the ballot. It would be the last day that we have together to do that.
Okay, so one or two things, you could have the board convene even earlier than 6:00, or they can go through the interview, and then afterward, go ahead and take care of business.
Yeah, I just wanted to make mention of that.
Yeah. All right, it is a shorter night for you folks, hour and 20. Not so bad.
We'll have to talk about the board time a little bit later.
All right, and then, with the whole concept of site visits, everything else, week of July 31st, we'll come back to that, you know, again, it gives some thought to what you want to do, and if you decide to, you have to decide which three board members. And by the way, if you choose that, once you determine the three board members who would go, I would ask the three of you to tell me which days work, which, what timeframe, and then I would just let the candidates know, pick one of these. Just to put that out there. So then, August 10th, you have a meeting scheduled, you're saying that you can change it, so...
So, yeah, I can't do August 10th, I mean, if we really like one person, I don't care, you know, but if, but if it's contentious.
No, we need to have you there.
You've got to have everybody, if, yeah.
I agree.
I wouldn't want it, I wouldn't feel good about that.
No.
Is it just, is it that whole week, John?
Yeah, we're going that week, we're going out to New York, so...
New York.
John, you're going to the greatest place to have a meeting. You're going that whole week, John? You're going that whole week?
Yeah.
Yes, the whole week.
Yeah, what's the next available date? Looks like August 21st.
So wait, John, when is it, when you leave?
No, no, I mean, is it the 10th?
What about the week before, that first week of August?
What's, the 6th or 7th, they come and back.
The 7th is the second week of August.
12th to 13th? What about after the 12th or 13th, Rebecca, based on a doodle poll? When John comes back?
So we do site visits in the earlier part of the week, and then maybe, so that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
So you're doing, if you're doing interviews, the 25th and 6th, that's Tuesday and Wednesday, you know, it's feasible, the three board members can do the site visits on Thursday and Friday that week. And then the week of July 31st, selection of the superintendent.
Before he leaves at 6:00, so anytime before the 6:00.
Okay.
Is that good, John?
Yeah, I'm looking at the schedule, there are other people are out that week, too, though, so...
The week of July 31st?
Every day, though?
Board members can do July 31st.
Well, you wouldn't need all of them.
No, I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about, okay.
Oh, you're talking about, I'm sorry.
I thought we were talking about the selection date.
Oh, so there's, during that week, there's no kind of common date for everybody? Oh, I see. Okay, so that's not going to help.
No.
There's no common date the week of July 31st for all of you?
No.
Okay, all right.
So we're one week, one week later?
Yeah, I mean, it looks honestly, like, because of vacation schedules, it looks like the next...
So what's wrong with the week of the 14th? If we're making an active hire, we have a meeting the week of the, do we need that much time?
We don't have everybody available, though.
Oh, the week of the 14th?
Yeah, some people are on vacation, I think, so...
I'm sorry, what happened?
Oh, you're out for two weeks?
No, did I put two weeks? I hope I didn't. I, oh no, I put the 14th, the 15th. What happened?
You got a lot of vacation time.
Like, the 31st to August 5th, because can't, we don't have consensus on a date on that.
There's not, Rebecca's saying, is looking at calendars, there's no one date that week where all seven of you are available.
All right, what about the week of the 21st? What are we doing?
I mean, what about...
The 22nd, and then, I mean, we're making a decision on that Tuesday, we could, can we not make a hire that following Wednesday?
Or Tuesday?
The 22nd.
So you would make your selection on the 22nd? Yes? Well, this goes back to, if you're fortunate, and I'm not saying like crazy fortunate, if you have the contract ready in advance, you're prepared to quickly pass it on to your finalist and get the negotiation going, there are times that that negotiation goes very quickly. Once the negotiation's completed, if it takes a few days, I mean, sometimes it doesn't, and I wouldn't want you to think ill of the person you've selected if it takes longer. There are times attorneys get involved, and I mean, it's, that's okay. But if you're lucky, it could go quickly. I would just say, once you have the green light, you've got agreement on the contract, even if you scheduled a special meeting, which you could do, I mean, I don't know about, if you've ever done it, I've had board meetings at 7:00 AM to take a vote, right, just to get the vote in when we had to make a quick decision, and that was all we could make work. You could schedule a special meeting to vote and approve the contract at any time, once you've got the contract agreed to. And then it's just a matter of that person giving notice and becoming free to come on board.
So right now, we're saying the vote is August 22nd?
August 22nd.
August 22nd, that's the date that's open.
6:00, I presume, again, right?
I'm sorry, what was the date of the...
August 22nd. A selection date.
That's, it looks open for...
So that goes back to, it's going to be a longer time, you're going to need an interim.
I mean, all of this goes back to that, because I guarantee, and no, it might be me, we all have things come up, I mean...
I thought you might be, you being the interim, I was trying to understand. That conversation is late.
No, no, it might be me being the one that, like, as we get into this, I'm like, oh, I have something come up, so be prepared. This, as much as we're trying to keep this set in stone, like, we all have lives, we have stuff that comes up, like, who knows? So to Megan's earlier point, we should have our other plan going concurrently, because I'd hate to have, if we just get to a point where, like, okay, we have to extend this a couple of weeks, and then we just don't have anything, and then we're really scrambling.
I think we just need something concrete to go, in terms of a timeline, you know, and wherever it goes, it goes, right?
Yeah, but on some of these things, I wouldn't feel comfortable unless seven people were here. And so I'm just saying, be prepared, yeah, there are certain things in here that, I get it, we don't have to have them, but there are, there are a couple on here where I want everybody in here, and I'm not criticizing, again, but as much as we have to move and modify over time, we might have to, so the interim discussion is relevant once again.
I do think that, like, on some of these, like, our decision, right, if something comes up, we could always delay that, but if we are, if we are going to have first-round interviews of the 17th, 18th, 19th, right, if something does, and we get it, there's emergencies that come up, we probably should try our best, like, if we're going to ask candidates, right, to come, you know, I mean, it would be hard pressed on, like, that day, unless there's a real emergency, someone at, like, 3:00 says, "I can't come," and then we cancel, and then we, I'm just saying, we got to be...
Well, I think the point was made, which I think is valid, if the interviews are going to be recorded, and something comes up, emergency, you miss a night of interviews, but you have the opportunity to go back and watch the interview, then I think you're going to be okay. When it means all seven of you coming together to make a decision, that's when I think it's really critical that you're all here.
Yep.
Yeah, and that, we have flexibility, because we're not relying on other people for...
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
We'll do our best, but should we need to move it, I think we're going to need to be amenable to that.
So are we saying that if someone doesn't, isn't able to appear for an interview, we would continue on, one person, it's...
As long as there are four people present, we will continue on.
Oh, gotcha.
But that, the Thursday is the most important, when all seven need to be there to make the selection.
And that's the August 22nd.
Absolutely say so.
Because we're all asking the same questions, and if it's videotaped, then we're, we're just gonna see the same, you know, the answers. So whether or not Michelle asks my questions if I'm not there twice, doesn't make a difference.
So enjoy your birthday with your husband.
Well, luckily, it doesn't conflict, so I'm happy enough.
Oh.
So Rebecca, I'm not there from August 25th, potentially for the whole of the following week as well.
Oh, you're fine.
But.
Right now, you're fine.
Even at that, though, I would just say this, if, if all it is, is voting to approve the contract.
Correct. All, all seven don't necessarily need to be.
No, I, I, for that, because you're really not making a decision, the decision's already made, you're just approving it, so.
We, we probably would've already had a conversation about budget and all those kinds of things, too, so you, you should be safe.
Yeah. Okay. So.
Could we just read through the dates again, please?
Oh, sure, sure. And what I'm gonna do, by the way, is I will update this, and I'll send it back out to you, but, so, um, on July 11th, at 6 o'clock, I'll present the applications to you, you'll determine who to interview, we'll prepare for first round interviews. On July 17th, 18th, and 19th, starting at 6 o'clock, we're planning to have first round interviews, depending, that may change depending on how many you pick. And then the 20th, you would come back, 6 o'clock, to make a decision on finalists. July 25th and 26th, you would be here at 6 o'clock, from about 6 to, uh, 7:20, to conduct second round interviews. Candidates will be here during the course of the day as well. Week of July 31st, likely site visits, although it could be some, another version of that, we'll decide that later, but that, that wouldn't include all board members, anyway. Week, uh, not week of, August 22nd, 6 o'clock, selection of the superintendent. And then the rest of this is a little bit fuzzy, just based on how negotiations go.
Okay. So, going back to Tarek's point earlier, so given that, and given our, our new timeline, and this extending longer, when should we propose a deadline to communicate to the team of three suggested individuals for the interim position?
If, if I may, I mean, I think you could start that process anytime, right?
What would be our, what would be our, our deadline, so we can start having that conversation as to whom we would like to bring in?
What I, what I wouldn't wanna know first, and this is assuming you would want my assistance with this, right, but I'm just telling you, it doesn't have to be. But if you would, what I'd be looking to you for, which I would presume this is gonna come from the committee, is, are you willing to consider internal candidates, or do you wanna focus externally? Right? And are you empowering me at that point, kinda to go out and, and, you know, identify, is there a candidate who might fit the bill, but based on what? You know, are there particular skills and experiences you think are gonna be really critical, if possible, for that person to have? I agree with the point that was made earlier, that you may not be able to be so picky that they have everything that you're looking for, as long as they have the wherewithal to manage it, that would be, I think, okay. But ideally, here are the things that we think they need to be prepared to deal with, and we'd love to see that they have experience with these things. So once you have answers to those two things, I would suggest, let me know, and let me know that, kinda, you're ready for me to start, kinda, looking out and reaching out. At the same time, reminding you that if you, any of you have individuals that you know of, that you would like me to reach out to, potentially on your behalf, let me know that, too. So that can happen at any time.
I think we indicated, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we were open to both internal and external options.
Yeah, that's my answer, too.
Yes, okay.
I, I'd propose, go ahead, Silva, you had your hand up, sorry.
No, no, you, no, once we're done with this conversation, I had a question on the calendar, but, so.
I was just gonna say, I'd propose for the committee, if we're gonna have any criteria, maybe just quickly poll via email quickly, and then we can, here's, here's a couple of things that we all feel, and just go. I don't think we need to wait, make this laborious for any reason, so.
I agree.
No, I saw, in other words, I don't think you need a deadline so much, just to empower the committee to go ahead and, and get to it, and at their earliest convenience, let me know. I don't think it's urgent yet, but it's important, for sure, and I hear that you don't wanna wait, like, weeks to get started, and you don't have to.
So someone will poll each one of you for feedback in what you're looking for?
I say, if anyone has feedback, go ahead and send it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah?
But I, I think that trying to outline, I, I think it's someone with a depth of experience, and just, let's organically try and collect names, submit them to the committee. If you have names that you can submit, let's look at 10 people and, and try and, and try and make the choice. But I think if we start outlining, well, this is the criteria I'd like to see in an interim, I think we're possibly getting unrealistic.
I think you, I think you focused on looking at what skills, so if we can, I think that's what you.
Well, you had indicated that the person's gonna walk into some, dealing with some issues that you would hope that they would have a skill set for, or maybe some experience with. That's where I was going with that.
So maybe skill set, maybe indicating what skills we'd like for the person to have, as opposed to, that might be easier than criteria.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want it to be so strict that you're, because, again, I, in my opinion, I don't think the, the pool of available people's gonna be huge. So you don't wanna too quickly lim, start eliminating people based on, well, they don't have that skill.
Someone who has extensive experience at administration, or as a prior superintendent, they're maybe recently retired, hopefully, at some point in their career, they've touched on construct, school construction issues, things like that, that I think just overall strong leadership, especially during a massive transition.
So, and if you're telling me that fundamentally that's what you want, I don't need anything else to start.
I mean, that's what I said earlier, and it was, that's too much.
Maybe we don't need a committee. It sounds like the committee's work isn't necessary, possibly, because.
The committee, the purpose of the committee would be able to have offline conversations outside a meeting.
About the people.
Oh, about the people that he's suggesting.
To gather feedback, to, to correspond directly with John.
Ah, yes.
Yeah, not deliberation, but just gathering everything and getting a recommendation.
Right, the committees never make the decision, right?
No.
Right.
Yeah.
To talk about the people, because remember, we can't talk about the people.
Okay, all right.
I do have a question, going back to the timeline.
Sure.
So we're now proposing that the second round interviews are on the 25th and 26th of July.
Yes.
But the selection for the superintendent would be when?
August 22nd.
There's almost four weeks between those two, so, so here's what I'm asking. The week of July 31st is meant for site visits. We don't know yet if both of those are gonna be out of state, or one's gonna be out of state, one's gonna be in state, so let me run through my train of thought.
Kind of what we do with that, that's right.
Right? So, so my question is, if you look at the week of July 31st, and the question for Rebecca, what's everybody's availability on, let's say, August 3rd? Does that work, or?
We already checked those, we, we checked all, John checked all those weeks.
John, August 3rd doesn't work?
No, it works for me, but it doesn't work for everyone, so.
We checked those weeks on the doodle poll, and that's why we ended up way at the 22nd.
Yeah, I think, if I'm right, I just.
I think, I think that's the week it was. Okay.
Tarek's on the week of the 31st, and then John's off the week of the 10th, and then Tarek's off the week of the next week, so that's why we got to the 22nd.
We get the 7th, the week of the 14th, somebody is unavailable every single one of those weeks.
I mean, the district is closed, but maybe we can figure something out of, are you bought, so the district is closed on the 5th of August, but maybe we can figure something out that, that works. Are not that week on sale?
No, 5th is, August 5th is Saturday.
August 4th.
August 4th, hold on.
I can do it.
Um, August 4th. I'm gonna give credit to Nancy, she put together a master calendar finally. August 4th, um, that's, fine, yeah, that's fine.
That's what I asked, and I.
Yeah.
If some, if some time on August 4th works, ideally in the day, and not 6 o'clock on a Friday night, I mean, we could work, we could figure out.
August was a Friday. So, so are we trying to say during the day?
No, I, I would not be available during the day.
Even if it's evening, would, would August 4th work for everybody?
Friday night?
Friday night's not ideal for everybody.
Friday under the lights?
Friday night's not ideal, but you know, everybody's.
I know it's not ideal, but the other people have to support the meeting, too.
You'd be out on the 4th. And is 3rd an option for anybody?
Thursday night?
Yeah.
Tarek, Tarek's not available.
She's out, Megan's out, too.
Second?
No, it's not an option.
Well, so I, I, here's what you're dealing with, just to, to sum it up, August 4th, if you could all do it, is a Friday night.
It's not available.
Oh, no, it's not available?
Yes.
All right, then we're done with that. Okay, all right, so we're back to August 22nd, which is not ideal, that's a, a long time between your final interview and the time you make the selection, so it's not great, but if that's the best you can do, it's the best you can do.
I see the concern, but also, I think we're good at note-taking and writing our thoughts down about each candidate, right?
And I think to your point earlier, it's like.
Yeah, it doesn't stop you as individuals from far earlier than the 22nd knowing where you wanna go with this, right? You can, you can make your own personal decision, and that's what's gonna happen on the 22nd, is you're gonna individually say, here's who I would like to select anyway. So you're right, you're, you're not waiting till the 22nd to make your decision. Collectively, you're waiting till the 22nd.
And then not to mention, it's gonna be a not-so-great period of time in their district, whether it's the week of the 4th, or the, or the following week.
That's very true. It's, it's, it's not ideal, but I go back to, if it's somebody who really wants to be here, I'm fairly confident they'll make it work, and as you said, in, in an absolute worst-case scenario, if I'm wrong, and this deters anybody worth interviewing from applying, you'll, you'll know that, too, when you see the applications, and then we go from there. I don't expect that. I, I'm optimistic, but.
And this is all gonna be posted on our superintendent's search website, too, so any candidate that's interested in applying is going to see our, our timeline.
And.
So they're gonna be informed of, of this window of time, steps on the website, okay?
They have to be aware that they could, it could be longer, you know, I think, because I don't wanna have two interims.
Oh, no, no, for sure, you would want somebody who could start the 1st of August, or a little bit earlier than that, to have a bit of an overlap. And I would suggest, looking at this, I would probably be asking somebody to, um, potentially be available even through September.
I mean, you would think an interim would be okay with that, yeah.
Totally, especially with everything we have.
I'll try to train someone.
Yeah, well, we have a lot of stuff happening, anyway. I don't think it's the worst thing in the world to have more hands on deck, for a minute, at least.
Okay. All right.
Thanks, Silva.
Good try.
So, I, I, I think I know the, the answer to this one already, but going back to the, the agenda, you do want national advertising, correct? That was an additional $1,400, which just covers the cost of the advertising itself. And I think it's wise, I do. I would say this, candidates who are out of state, looking to come to Michigan, know to look at the, the sites in Michigan where this job will be advertised. You could, though, have candidates out of state who may be willing to move to another state, are not necessarily targeting Michigan. That's where the national advertising is going to help, because they'll look in national publications to see what's out there in the country, and then they will see this. So this would catch their attention, so I think that's wise. Just a note, by the way, I just think it's interesting, I thought of you folks, I'm doing the search in the North Adams Jerome School District, which is a district of about 320 students, southwest of here. It's around Hillsdale, very tiny district in a, in a farming community. They had nine applicants, three were from out of state. So just to know that.
How far out of state? Not like, you know, Ohio, Indiana, I mean, what is that?
You're testing my memory, but.
I guess I can't, I don't know.
No, 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 you can, you can ask. One was in Texas, one was in Oklahoma, and I'm blanking on the third. It wasn't anywhere near, it wasn't what you might typically, because more commonly, you'll get Ohio, Indiana, Wisconsin.
Something wrong with a Wyoming candidate.
Just interesting observation, if they, if they wanna come to Michigan, they're finding vacancies and they're applying.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
I mean, you can't beat Michigan.
Some days, I don't know.
I mean.
I would agree, we have every, all season.
We got a lot of lakes.
So.
Beautiful weather in the summer.
So the next thing on the agenda is personality assessment.
There you go.
Well, but, so I'm gonna suggest this, because we do. You got information on the personality assessment from Hewling's and Associates. I've got a flyer in your folder, and I've got an example of what a profile that they produce would look like. You wouldn't, you wouldn't do this until, what they recommend, I'll say, is that you do this just prior to first round interviews. And I just, a few days ago, because I wanted to be clear on this, I've not worked with these folks on one of these yet. So I talked to the woman who would be my contact there. She advised that it happened before first round interviews, that would be an additional $2,000 in total. She said she would be able, between the time you selected candidates and the time the interviews started, she'd be able to complete this and get it to you. And she said it is better for you to have this assessment prior to starting the interviews, and she said there could be some benefit in you as you're hearing from people, kinda looking back on this and seeing, kinda, how things match up. So I want you to know, though, and you don't have to decide this tonight, so that's weeks away, right, and I guess that's what I'm saying, at a subsequent meeting on your own, you can just let me know at some point, yea or nay. I'm not trying to sell this to you, I don't, it doesn't benefit me personally, I don't have a vested interest. It's just another data point that you might be interested in receiving, so by all means, if you are interested, let me know that. If you, if it would be helpful to hear from somebody directly from Hewling's, to be able to ask them questions, get a little more detail than I'm able to provide, I'm sure I could arrange that, too, so if you let me know that you'd like that, just tell me, and I'll follow up for you.
Okay, we'll come back to that.
Okay, yes, you can revisit that. Compensation and contract parameters, so you have in your folder comparative data that I put together for you. And I got this, I'm just telling you strictly from, you can go on, on the transparency reporting on district websites, and it's all there. So I put it in two forms. On the first page, it's compensation by salary only, and on the second page, it includes other forms of compensation. I'm virtually certain that when you see on the second page, some districts that list the salary and no other benefits, they probably are offering other benefits and just didn't put them in their transparency report, I'm just being upfront. So I included as much there as I could find in the transparency reports, just to provide some additional perspective. But what we do in, in a posting is put a salary range, it's strictly salary, anyway. So I think the more relevant information is probably on the front, because that's what candidates are gonna be paying attention to. What's the salary range, and will that be enticing enough for them to wanna come here?
So how would I read, so I'm looking at the total compensation on the second page.
Yes.
What is, you've got annuity listed in addition to salary.
Yep.
For many districts. What does that mean? Is that based on number of years of tenure in a district?
No, no, it's just a, a tax-sheltered annuity, that the district, some districts say, we're gonna make this part of your annual compensation annually, we're gonna give you a $10,000 annuity in addition to your salary.
For the peer that you're employed with the district?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Which still counts towards your final average compensation for retirement purposes, versus mileage, for example, car, car allowance, which doesn't count towards that. So typically, candidates would like to include things that will count towards their final average compensation. And my guess is that, in terms of you, for wherever you want the salary range to be, my presumption would be that you're likely to offer some other pieces to that, too, you may wanna offer an annuity, right? So you'll know that's a part of it, but the thing that's going to catch candidates' attention is obviously salary. And you put a range, that typically, there's a 15 to $20,000 gap between the low and the high range. When candidates ask me, what I indicate to them is that indicates the minimum amount that the district would pay you in salary, and the maximum amount that they would pay you, because if candidates come back and say, well, I make this much, would they pay me more than what this maximum says? My answer is no. So just know that. That's how I'm, I'm portraying that to candidates, is that it's minimum and maximum that you'd be willing to pay, or anywhere within that range.
Now, let me ask another question on bonuses, if those exist in education.
Oh, well, a performance incentive, yeah, sure.
I think the current contract. And are they tied to academic outcomes, or whatever the board prioritizes?
Whatever the board prioritizes, most often, it's tied to academic outcomes, but there could be other things, too.
Go.
I didn't know bonuses were something you gave in high, in K-12 education.
Well, it's typically framed as a, a performance incentive, something, you don't necessarily call it a bonus.
Okay. That word, bonus, is not a, is that?
Yeah, that's not a.
I'm like, that's not a word for K, for.
No, not, no, it's really not used, no.
I think Superintendent Watson got $5,000, it says in his contract, uh, performance incentive.
Okay, all right, which.
But also a $10,000.
Annuity?
Um, tax-sheltered account.
There you go. And see, that wasn't on your, your transparency report, but, and I assume there's other districts where that would be the case, too. So just know that what you're looking at on the second page is probably incomplete. But I would assume that what they list in terms of salary would be pretty accurate, I assume.
He started off at 195, and he was increased, it looks like.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I included quite a few other Oakland County districts, and some others that I just think are prominent districts, that those are the kind of districts that candidates may be comparing you to in terms of, when they're thinking about salary.
The one thing, and I know it is, I got this feedback, is we, we seem to compare like-sized districts, but you always gotta pair numbers, right? So when we look at, again, feedback I've gotten in the past, you look at, like, a Birmingham, like, they do have, like, two high schools, we have one, I'm just saying, you gotta, we, we look at like, like district, we always seem, seem to look at like districts, but we also gotta look at numbers.
I would, I would say this, logically speaking, it makes sense to look at.
Number of students.
Districts with, with comparable student enrollment.
Correct.
I totally get that.
That's a, you know.
I'm just telling you, in terms of you being competitive and trying to hire the best person out there, your better bet, honestly, is not to focus as much on that, you're also considered to be, fair or not, a district with a lot of resources, and have the wherewithal to pay superintendents pretty well, and the expectation, I think, out there is that you're gonna be one of the higher-paying districts when it comes to superintendents.
Yeah, I'm not saying that.
Are, are we?
No, but I'm just saying.
Are we, are we one of the higher?
Well, you can see from here that, in Oakland County, you're, you know, you're, the districts that I found that are higher right now are Troy and Rochester.
Wall Lake?
Wall Lake in terms of salary right now, no, but then when you look at total compensation.
Wall Lake Consolidated Schools.
I don't know what the sick payout is at 54,000.
I don't get it either, to be frank.
I don't know who's sick, or what they're doing, but I'd like 55,000.
That package for.
I don't know who's sick or what they're doing, but I like $55,000.
I don't get that, but you're right, it's, the package blows up when you include the rest of that, so I don't know.
I had a question about the car. It looks like the compensation for the car was removed, and I was just curious why.
Yeah, no, I know the history on that, because we looked at it originally, and some people here in Central were getting a car, and we're like, where are they driving to, right? So it was kind of in lieu of when you traveled around, you got, like, a car, but we're like, all right, just let people put through their expenses, because where are people traveling to? So we did away with the car allowance.
And just paid out a flat salary, so that difference was included in this rate.
And I would say this, if you decide you're willing to go higher on salary, that might mean when you go to negotiate a contract, you're not going to be willing to go quite so high on other parts of it, like annuity or whatever else it may be. I mean, that's just, those are all factors to take into account. I think the bottom line, and this is from my perspective as the search consultant, you need to settle on what you think is fair and what you feel like makes sense to your district. So I can't dictate to you what your salary range should be. I would love to see it as high as it could be, because the higher you're able to comfortably go, the more of an incentive it's going to be, and it makes my recruitment a little bit easier, too. And that's one thing I didn't mention, is during that five-week posting period, that's an opportunity for me, too, to be reaching out to folks that may not be naturally applying, which I would be doing, too.
I just don't like to be, I don't like to just say, oh, well, we're going to have a salary at this base, and then if you decide you want to negotiate, then we're going to go back and forth, as opposed to saying, this is what the salary is, and this is what we have to work with. So, I mean, I don't really know.
You're saying you don't know, you don't know which of those scenarios you like better?
That is what I'm saying.
Got it, okay.
In terms of either a range or just a flat amount?
Well, no, in having that conversation, do we post it and say, okay, $250,000, $225,000 is a good salary, right? But is 250 a more competitive salary, and is that the highest we can go? And do we say, our budget allows for us to go 250, let's just do 250, and we have no negotiation? I'm not real sure which area I'm most comfortable with going down.
Part of the reason you do a range, again, just from experience, is that it should, where you land ultimately is going to partially be based on the experience of the person you hire. So if you hire somebody who's been, who's got a lot of superintendent experience and large district prominent, you know, they have a lot of that, you're, you may go right to the top of the range. And part of it's going to be dependent on what they're currently making, and it has to be enough of an incentive, right, to increase. Whereas if you hire somebody who doesn't have quite as much experience, and maybe their current salary is quite a bit below this, you might be in a position to go somewhere lower than the top of the range. That's normally why you have some variation there.
So typically, is it like a $10,000 range, or 20...
I've seen as low as 10, and I've seen as high as 20. I don't think I've seen a bigger gap than 20. Quite often, honestly, if I could pick a range that's most common, it's about 15.
We used a range last time, I'm just saying. I think we...
No, no, no. I don't think so. I just want to know.
Okay, just, no, I'm just wondering.
You don't have to choose today, but know that we're talking about this posting going up by the second, by June 2nd, and we would include a salary range within that. So you'd need to know that you would have the opportunity to make that decision and get that number to me by then.
Yeah, we use the range, and we use the current, as I think it was the high end, the current salary of the, of the departing superintendent.
What does that show as salary right now? I just want to make sure it aligns with this, in the contract.
Oh, in the contract?
Yeah.
His salary was, let's see, $224,500?
Okay, that doesn't quite match what was on the website, but pretty, but almost identical.
Oh, yeah. Plus a $10,000 kind of annuity, it looks like.
Which didn't show up there, so.
So, 234...
This is close enough, it's in the ballpark.
Okay.
So if you...
So 234?
There's, yeah.
Superintendent Watson right now.
There's 18 districts listed, right? If you look at the top third, right, Troy, Bloomfield, Southfield, Birmingham, Novi, Farmington are the middle, right? I'm just trying to look at it as a distribution here. So Bloomfield is like the seventh or eighth on the list here, in terms of salary. So maybe your range is slightly below, or where superintendent's at right now, 5K below and 10K above.
Which would be, what, 220 to 235, is that what you're suggesting? Just, it's helpful to throw a number out, maybe as a starting point, so let's start from there.
I feel like 215 to 235 is a nice range in terms of our district, you know, is comparable to Birmingham, and Troy is a bit bigger, maybe that's why they pay them. More, it has a lot more, doesn't have more...
I think Birmingham...
Students? Oh, two high schools, okay, yeah.
I think we should stay in the area of the Birmingham-Bloomfield current, 225.
It will, it'll make a difference with recruitment, I'm just telling you that. Just know that. I think if you, I think the perception out there is going to be that that might seem to be a little bit low.
What would be low?
If you were at about where Birmingham is, I mean, honestly, you're higher than that now, and I think...
No, I mean, at, with the 225 as the salary, correct? Not, oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the 225.
No, that's okay.
At the max.
Yeah.
So 215 to 225.
I guess what I'm suggesting is, you might want to consider having the max be a bit higher than that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I agree.
I do.
We're saying a range of 2...
Yeah.
215 to 235, is that what you're saying?
I think I'd put the floor at maybe 220.
I would, yeah, I would. 220 to 235. 220 to 235?
220 to 235, 220 to 240, something along those lines.
I'd go 240. But that is, that is plus the $10,000.
Well, that's going to be subject to negotiation, that hasn't been determined yet.
This is just salary we're talking about.
I get it, I'm just trying, I'm thinking, how much is this going to cost the district overall? That's all I'm thinking inside my mind.
Here's partly the way to look at that, and you're right to think about it, so don't get me wrong, but part of the way to look at it is that, if you're talking about a difference of, when it comes down to it, $5,000, $10,000, $15,000, to get the best person you can, it's going to be worth it if you're paying $5,000 to $10,000 to $15,000 more. Right. Because that person would likely be here, highly successful here for a long time.
If they stay, yes.
No, with a...
Well, if they're being paid well, they'll stay.
Yeah.
That'll help.
That will definitely help. It will attract more candidates, that's for sure. I mean, we all have applied to jobs.
I am in the lower end, but I'm okay with that.
We have all applied to jobs, we look at the salary, it's something that attracts people and retains them, and maybe we should go a little bit higher. You know, inflation was 10% last year.
If the majority of us are looking at more of the floor being 220, I'm okay with that, I just would, that's my preference.
Let me just add this, too, in terms of the perspective of your district out there, right? You're a high-achieving district with very high expectations, and there's going to be very, very high expectations on this new superintendent, and this is even more than a lot of superintendencies, a position that's squarely in the spotlight, right? Very prominent. So, all of that, those are all factors people are going to take into account when they're considering, am I going to apply? And honestly, this might sound crass, but part of it is that I would be more willing if I know that the salary is up at a range where you're very competitive with some of the high flyers in the state, and I would be willing to take on those, that responsibility and those challenges. So I, I don't want to beat it to death, because it's not my decision, but I just want to at least share that perspective, because I think that's valid. I think that's kind of the thought process that's out there among...
I think we're looking at it from a perspective of Troy's large, Birmingham's larger, Rochester's larger, but if you look at the, like, the west side of the state, you have East Grand Rapids, that's not really a big school district. Rockford might be, I'm not sure.
East Grand Rapids, I think their schools are high-performing, if I'm not mistaken.
They are.
Right, well, I hope ours are as well.
Oh, no, no, like, I mean, like, they are, if you go and look at the data, they are really good. Not that I'm trying to push nobody to go work there, I'm just, not saying we're not bad, I'm just...
No, I'm just saying, like, that it doesn't have to be the number of students, because like...
Yeah, there's no magic formula.
Yeah.
So this is where, so if the recommendation to get the best candidates by our search firm, say, so what you know about our district is 220 to 240, right? So I think that's probably would be the best to post, right? That's...
District, our responsibility is the money, and so I'm thinking that's, that's a lot to me.
I agree with you, Michelle. And the way I see it, the way, my perspective is, the higher quality candidate you attract, the more budget-savvy they are, the more human resource-savvy they are, you avoid complicated costs that, and to your point, I mean, the landscape of education has changed, it's become increasingly more difficult for teachers and administrators to do this job. It's a very hard job, and...
This process costs money, so if we get someone that wants to be there...
The district's budget of $105 million.
Yeah, and I get that, and I'm just saying, like, if you look at where our teachers are, and then if our superintendent's making $300,000, what does that say about how, I mean, I'm just thinking...
You don't want the disparity, yeah.
That, to be that grand, right? So...
I agree with that. That's what I really don't like about public education, that our teachers aren't compensated better.
But that's another story.
Yeah, that's a whole other topic, right?
But I can, I can support you all in our decision to be the base of 20 and to go up to 50 or 40 or whatever it was. I can, I can get behind that. I'm okay with it, if we can, we can move forward, I'm okay with it.
I think that's the market right now, and also, if we don't track candidates...
I was thinking higher, actually.
Yeah, I was thinking higher, because if you look at the top third in this list, right, I don't even know how to pronounce this, Lance...
Lance Cruz.
Lance Cruz, thank you. They're in the top third, and they're at 242 already, so. My vote would be 225 to 245, 225 being the current salary, or the salary of the current superintendent.
I like the idea of a bigger swing, depending on qualifications.
Right.
225 to 250.
Yeah, I was going to say, 50 was going to be kind of like... Look, you were still going to pick a salary, it's not like we're committed to paying top end, it's all about who we pull in. And you're right, we have a commitment to budgetary responsibilities, but our other is selecting a superintendent, so like, they're kind of at conflict, right? And to me, in this moment, it feels like I want to put more weight on getting the right candidate, so we don't have to do this so rapidly again, hopefully, and so that we get somebody that is the best candidate for us, based on what we've got. And I would, 250, I think, would, I was even thinking a little more, but that's fine.
I was, too.
I'm trying to be, I'm trying to temper that.
We don't have to make the decision tonight, but I think it's a good conversation.
Yeah, we have two weeks, right, before he posts? I mean, keep in mind, and I get it, you know, we want to, you know, be competitive, because this is what the market is saying in a superintendent, but when we look at Rochester, I mean, they have three high schools. I mean, we also got to be fair in terms of numbers of students, right? I mean, it's easy to say, look at the upper echelons, Ann Arbor, I mean, I can't tell you how many, they have, you know, there's like four, I mean, they probably double our size.
So Rebecca sent us all...
We're not looking at Ann Arbor.
Just your data profile.
Yeah, I think that's, that's something that everyone should look at, because we're very different in Bloomfield. We have a lot of unique programs, and a farm, and a nature center, and, you know...
Yeah, but if we have a range, if we have, if we have an expanded range, it doesn't, as Tarek said, it doesn't hold us to the top of the range.
It doesn't.
But if we get an all-world candidate from wherever...
Right.
And to attract, it doesn't, doesn't limit us.
But we do have to be good stewards of the money we are looking over, and I've heard that before from this board, that we have to look at every, you know, $1,000 as something that could change a student's life, possibly.
We do, that's why you have a range, and you see what candidates come in, and then what we can negotiate and get. But also, if we don't get, if we don't attract a candidate, then for the interim, we are paying that interim, money, you know, you know, obviously, so.
Look at it this way, let's say there's 5,000 students, I know it's a little bit more than that. If it's 250, that's $5 of the allotment per student, right, per, for the superintendent. If it's 300, it's $6 per student, okay? So it's not, when you talk about a per-student expenditure, it's not that big of a deal. I'm not saying that we should put out 300, I'm just saying that, like, the difference in $1 of student spend is...
It's not 5 and 10.
But I do know that another board member did run to lower the last superintendent's high salary, and she won, based on that issue, that the superintendent, Superintendent Watson, ran based on the fact that he was getting a high salary, it's higher than the national average.
What happened?
What was the plan?
I don't remember that.
I was on the board, what did you say? What did we do?
Oh, one of the school board prior members ran based on the fact that the last superintendent was making more than average with a district our size. He was making a high amount. See what I'm saying?
So the board member made a decision to run for the board for that reason?
Yeah. She said we shouldn't pay that much to our superintendent.
Oh.
I don't, that's what I read, and she told me that, and, I don't know, voters spoke in that instance, so I don't want to have it so high, is all I'm saying.
I don't want it that high, I mean, I want it reasonable, but also to attract a decent candidate.
Yeah, like, we have a very demanding parent base and community, so if you want someone who's willing to take that on, there needs to be incentive.
But we need a pool, right? And if, and if the recommendation of our search firm is to attract the pool, this is what the range needs to be, or else we're going to get nobody, regardless of what, this is what the market says today, right, wrong, and different. It's like when you sell a house, right? You know, they, you know, you have a price, you want to have a price that's going to sell, we want to have a price that's going to attract candidates.
So then can we just say, who's comfortable with going as high, and I'm just going, I'm going to go down, as 280?
Terms of a range?
The top of the range. Who's high, good with going as high as 270?
I did the math wrong.
Okay? 260?
260, I'm willing to.
I would, yeah, 60 is kind of a range of 2...
260 and then down below that would be $15,000 difference.
I think the range should be bigger, personally.
Yeah, I think we could go a range of 220 to 225 to 260.
I would suggest this probably, I don't know that you'd want to go any higher than like a $25,000 difference, because if, again, if I'm thinking about applying, I'm excited to see it could go as high as 260, but it's also telling me, they're putting a giant range in there, and they're going to probably lowball me when I get there.
Yeah.
I get it. All right, so assuming our current...
I'd like an opportunity, actually, I didn't think we were going to be, like, voting on this. I'd like to, so we're having a general discussion, but I would like to do a little bit more independent research on this topic, before we state publicly what we're willing to, our threshold is. I think that we've just, like, my appetite is that I think we're going to attract a better candidate, but I would like to research some other things and not just throw stick numbers out there to see if they...
So can I just ask this, if...
I guess I was under pressure, we needed to make a decision.
It would help, but if I'm hearing that you'd like a little more time, so I'm looking at this. I'm going to be getting a draft of the position announcement to you during the week of, sometime during the week of May 29th, with the goal of getting feedback, and then posting it by Friday, June 2nd. So sometime by the middle of that week, let me say maybe by the end of May, May 31st. If you can give me a salary range, it's enough time for me to plug it into this position announcement and have it ready to post.
You have to do that at the board table?
Yeah, we'll make the decision at the May 25th meeting.
Oh, my goodness. Have you seen the agenda?
Oh, boy.
Well...
Wait, you mean that's at 24?
We can be efficient.
I mean, between now and then, everybody should come with an idea.
Can we have a go around and say what people are comfortable with right now?
Yeah.
I personally don't feel comfortable stating, my appetite is to make sure that it's very competitive, but I don't want to just throw numbers out there, just to throw them out without doing a little...
Doing it wrong, so you're probably right.
Exactly. Exactly.
I think you all are just tired.
I'd like to look at some other criteria and weigh some other thoughts.
So Rebecca did give us the district profile, which, to Rebecca's, to, not Rebecca, to somebody's, I don't know who made it. Rebecca, you probably made this point, about us having a farm and a nature center.
And other things.
Right, and other, other districts don't, I don't even know if you even go back, you're going to even be able to find something or another school that's going to have what we...
Our special education program.
I don't, I don't even know if you even went back and looked at what other schools are doing, that that's going to be something that's going to help us in making a decision.
Well, so the last thing I'll say, too, other than if you can give it to me by, again, May 31st, I'm good. So you've got some time, but, you know, potentially, you'd like to see people with superintendent experience apply. Not that you're going to be limiting it to that, but that would be great, of course. But, so for those folks in particular, the higher you go, the more likely it's going to be that this will be an increase for them, right? It's just one more thing to consider. So I'm not, you heard my viewpoint. I hope you go as high as you possibly can get comfortable with, but I get that you need to be fiscally responsible, too. So whatever you tell me, ultimately, I'll plug it in, and off we go.
All right. Well, I think I'm still not going to change in my, my decision. I still think it's okay to be where we are, but at most, I would be comfortable with, would be 250.
Okay.
And I don't think that's going to change.
Should we all state what we're comfortable with?
I'm just, I'm just putting it out there.
We're here. Oh, wait, you're not prepared to.
Okay, let's wait a second. But it's fine, we can go around and make it's not prepared.
Whoever's comfortable can speak, can give their rank. Go ahead.
I thought 225 to 250 was a fair range.
I can go with that range, 225 to 250.
I could support that, yes. And my logic is, I think we're comfortable with superintendents paid at market, so we've got to at least pay the incoming superintendent market, and hopefully they'll be as qualified, if not better, and then we've got to give a good enough range on top of that. So 225 to 250, something I'm comfortable with.
And I just base my decision on being comfortable with that, given the additional expectations and what our current superintendent is making plus competitive salary would be. To me, that would make it competitive.
So what's the range you have?
The same, 225 to 250.
I'm comfortable with that as well, based on the comparables. And I understand our district's a little bit smaller than some of the comparables, but when you add in having to run a recreation department, you know, and all the add-ons, I might even be willing to go a little bit higher, but I think 250, I mean, that's right in there for the most part, as far as the salary goes, so I will sign off on the 225 to 250, unless someone else changes my mind.
Well, now that we're in the conversation, and there seems to be a consensus with that range, I guess my thought would be if we find a candidate who has high qualifications, that merit being at the high end of that range, and they, during negotiations, come up with some sort of very creative and aggressive incentive for that additional 10K, and they're able to, you know, somehow have some sort of strong performance, and they actually meet it, and they, you know, that, that would be a reason, in my opinion, to go above, and not weak, soft goals. Real competitive goals that would be worthy of that additional amount.
You will have an opportunity to negotiate. I mean, you're right, even beyond the salary. You're totally correct.
Yep, so I guess, now that I've said I wasn't comfortable, I guess, now that we've talked through it enough, I think that's a range. Although you did not recommend going beyond a $15,000 range, and this is a $25,000 swing.
But hearing the discussion and understanding where that's coming from, I think, I could certainly live with this and feel good about it.
Okay.
I've written down three different ranges. But, yeah, I would be comfortable with that. My ranges, my, my last one was higher, but I'm like, I'm having a hard time finding a right, like, why not five more? So I'm comfortable with the justification being the base, or the current market value's there, and we're adding more, and then we have room in negotiations, so I'm okay with that.
Good.
All right.
One last item on the 25th.
I appreciate it, yes, yes. Okay, moving right along. So we already did number five, hooray. We're done with it. Remember that you can reach out to me. Do you all have my contact info to be able to do that? I think you do. Okay. So if you have any recommendations, people you'd like me to reach out to, it doesn't have to happen right away. We haven't even posted it yet, but let me know. Expectations, roles, and responsibilities. For me, I spoke to some of that at the beginning already in terms of my expectations of you, and what I'm asking of you is, trust the process and let it, let it work as intended, and I'm confident it'll get you where you need to be in the right way. My commitment to you, and I think I've demonstrated that already, we've already had one little meeting when I was in Maui, so I, what I committed to is I'm going to be readily accessible and available to you folks and do whatever I can to support you throughout this process and help shepherd this through, so that you feel like ultimately the process was relatively easy and led to a very difficult decision among some high-quality candidates. Points of contact and modes of communication. I think that the reaching out to suggest candidates to contact would be the exception. Normally, the way this works, tell me if you disagree, is that my communication is normally with the board president and administrative assistant, and then if there are questions and concerns that come from other board members, you funnel them through the board president, so that I have one point of contact. But I don't want you to think that means that the board president is going to be getting information that the rest of you won't. So if, just like I think a good superintendent does with the board at any time, one of you asks a question or asks for information, you all get it, right? And I treat it the same way here, right? So you would all get the same information, you would all get answers to questions. My assumption is that if one person's asking, other people may be wondering, too, we'll get it out to all of you. But it just helps with the process if I have that one point of communication on the board, and then I would depend typically on somebody in Rebecca's position to assist with some logistics and other matters, too. Okay with that? Okay. Anything else you want to add in terms of expectations for me? Be crystal clear, and I want to make sure that there's no misunderstanding on my part.
So in terms of the interim candidate, I was just curious what the next steps are. You're going to be...
I'm going to go ahead and start kind of making some contacts and reaching out to some folks to assess possible availability and interest. And when I'm in a position to be able to share some possible names with you, then post haste.
Okay.
No delay.
Sounds great.
Does that match what you're expecting?
Yep.
Okay. All right. I'm going to suggest we skip number seven, because it's late and you're tired. I can tell, which is okay. This is an intense conversation, so it's a lot to take in. I would just suggest this, these are the two things, again, that we get from the survey, from the survey link or from the face-to-face meetings, so, I mean, frankly, two things you can do. You can participate in the online survey, too, to make sure that your, your input is there. But the second thing is remember that you get a final shot at this, right? I put it all together. You're going to get a copy of the posting with the candidate profile that I've drafted, based on the feedback. But that's your opportunity to make any suggested changes, so you ultimately are the final arbiters of that. So you're going to be able to weigh in if you think that something needs to be added, modified, or whatever. With the student group, and to start to see when we could schedule those other stakeholder groups as well. Because I'm envisioning, if possible, getting those scheduled sometime next year. Okay, that has covered a lot of ground. I appreciate the dialogue. I appreciate the questions. I hope you are walking out, if you're confident that you've got a clear picture of what's happening, what to expect, and we'll be communicating very closely over the course of this.